February the 16th, 2021, board work session to order held here at Dunbar Middle School for Lynchburg City School Board. As we observe our call to order for tonight, allow me to please share with our LCS community that our work session tonight is being held here in Dunbar at 5:00 PM. The larger location allows for better social distancing for board members and public attendees. The school board welcomes the attendance of persons at its public meetings to reduce the spread of COVID-19 virus. Any person wishing to attend a public meeting in person will be required to participate in a health pre-screening upon arrival. The health pre-screening will consist of wearing a secure face mask over the mouth and nose in accordance with LCS policy J-H-C-C-A-Z-G-B-E-Y, having your temperature checked, and answering a few pre-screening questions. These measures are precautionary and put in place to protect our staff, students, school board members, and community from the spread of COVID-19. LCS staff will begin pre-screening persons at 4:30 PM. Each time, only persons who pass the health pre-screening will be admitted into the public board meeting. If a person does not pass the health screening, the person may still view the public board meetings, which are streamed live on YouTube at 5:00 PM. Meetings are rebroadcast on Comcast Cable Channel 17 at 10:00 AM and 7:00 PM and available online on the LCS YouTube channel. Thank you for that. As a reminder, work sessions are different from meetings, and they are designed for the school board to discuss procedures and at times vote on recommendations. However, there is not a time for public comments during work sessions. The next school board meeting when public comments are welcomed is March 2nd, 2021 at 5:00 PM. Until further notice, future board meetings and work sessions will continue to be held in the Dunbar Middle School auditorium unless otherwise posted on our LCS website, and the public will be notified in advance of any changes. At this time, we will now move to Section B of our work session, which is dealing with electronic participation in meeting. And this item is for action for the board tonight. Our school board attorney is available to comment if needed, but I think sufficient clarity is before us that we will need to entertain a motion tonight for the electronic participation of a school board member. The school board may conduct any meeting except closed meetings as outlined in Policy BDC wherein the public body business is discussed or transacted through electronic communication means if, on or before the day of a meeting, a member of the school board notifies the chair that such member is unable to attend the meeting due to a temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition that prevents the member's physical attendance, and two, the school board approves the member's participation by a majority vote of the members present at the primary or central meeting location. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion by any of our board members to approve the electronic participation of school board member Susan Morrison due to medical condition as outlined in Policy BDD.
As a Green Bird holder from Dunbar, I approve it.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. It's been moved by Dr. Gupta and seconded by Dr. Brennan. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. And might the school board clerk put in the record that school board member Morrison is participating electronically and of course, board there, this is not considered a personal matter but for the reasons stated in the motion. At this time, I would like for us to pause and stand for our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now move to Section C of our work session, which is the agenda approval. And board members, the board agenda has been featured, and all of the appropriate documents are provided for you. The chair would entertain a motion for approval with the notification that with this approval, before we move into Section D, School Administration Report, we will pause for just a moment in light of the fact that we have school board member recognition month as well as board clerk recognition week. And so, is there a motion to approve the agenda? All right, Dr. Gupta has made that motion. Dr. Carter seconds the motion. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Dr. Edwards.
Absolutely. So at our last meeting, we were participating by Zoom, so we did not get to formally recognize and appreciate the school board for School Board Appreciation Month. So, those of you who are watching can see that our tables are decorated with lovely goodies from our schools, our students, and as a token of appreciation for all of the service and work that our school board does, the timeless number of hours that you put in. And I'd just like to thank all of my students, my staff, who helped create these wonderful goodies that are on the table, which I can't wait to enjoy myself. But it just goes to show the talent that we have in Lynchburg City Schools. And I don't know about you all, when I walked in, I was thoroughly impressed with how this table looks just coming in as a token of celebration. So, I'd like to say thank you to the school board for all of your service, and it is much appreciated.
All right. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. We do want to again acknowledge the presence of school board member Susan Morrison, and Ms. Morrison is indicating that she cannot hear what is being said. And so whomever can work on that, we would greatly appreciate it. All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Edwards, and to the entire Lynchburg City School family. Aesthetically, this is just amazing, and a deep, clear message to board members of the appreciation that schools and individuals who are part of our family have for each of us to include Susan Morrison, and you'll get all of your things, Susan, at the appropriate time. So, board members, could we give all of the school division a hand for them thinking about us? We appreciate it. At this time, we would also, I'm going to ask the assistance of our vice chair on behalf of the entire board. The Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors has designated the third week in February, February the 15th through the 19th, as VSBA School Board Clerk Appreciation Week with a goal of building awareness of the role school board clerks play in assisting school board members, superintendents, and our local schools. Dr. Brennan, with you at this time, please just make a brief statement, and then we're going to give our board clerk who hit the ground running and with efficiency and effectiveness have assisted us. She's probably about doing a task now. Seems like our deputy, oh, she's very good, she's there. All right, go ahead, Dr.
Just on behalf of all board members, I'd just like to recognize Tina Day for the work she's done for us and for the schools and for the staff and the students. And we have some flowers in a car, a little gift certificate we like to give her on the vacation.
Thank you, Tina Day, for all of the great work. You do not show favoritism. You work with every one of these nine board members and staff, and we appreciate everything that you do for us.
And also, Tina, on behalf of senior leadership, because you do do a lot of work with us too, especially when it comes to putting the agenda together, we got you a little something too, just to say thank you for everything that you do.
All right. Thank you so much for those moments of appreciation. We will now move to Section D of our meeting, School Administration Report. Dr. Edwards.
Absolutely. So each work session, we invite a different department to come up and give you a little overview about that department. And tonight, we have the Special Education Department under the wonderful leadership of Mrs. Janine Daniels Bosher.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Because I'm double masked. I am Janine Daniels Bosher. I am the Director of Special Education for Lynchburg City Schools. And Austin, if you could bring the flow chart up. That's actually the presentation coming in a little bit. Under me here at the school board office, I have two supervisors of special ed, Kim Haisel and Tish Pharaoh. They work, Kim works more with the general ed side, Tish works more with the division-wide program side, but they work equally well together and can do just about anything that I ask. I also have three administrative assistants. I have Kathy White, who deals mostly with the finance aspects of special ed. I have Jackie Tyree, that does more of the Medicaid portion of it, and Lisa Thomas, who does the data. And that's the staff that I have here at the school board office. I also have a pre-K coordinator, Renee Anderson, who is stationed at Hutcheson but is still under me, so I work with her on the BPI program. Special ed in Lynchburg City, we just got our December 1 child count back, and the number has come down a little bit from the previous year. We are at 1,250. We serve a variety of disability categories from SLD, DD, ED, all the way to vision impaired, ID, and multiple disabilities. We have students and programs in all of our school buildings. Some of them are out in general ed with very minimal support. We also have students that are more self-contained in our division-wide program. We have students that participate in the Laurel Regional Program. We have students that are in private day placements, as well as we work with students that are residentially placed through the Department of Social Services. So we have a variety of groups that we deal with. We also have a program through, is in conjunction with Central Health, which is Project CERT. We have students that work through Lynchburg General. We have a teacher and IA support that works with those students through those programs. We have approximately 180 staff between teachers and IAs. There's a large amount more of support staff that come into that. It includes school psychologists, we have VCBAs, teachers of visually impaired, teachers of hearing impaired. So there's a large amount of staff that are there to support the students we have. As I said, our child count is at 1,250, which has come down a little bit. We were on the higher side of things. The state would like our percentage to be closer to 10%, and we're now currently at 15. Strengths for the division currently, our dropout rate has come down, our suspension and expulsion rate has come down. We've got a lot of kids in preschool, particularly attending out in the community. And we also have come down in our over-identification, which is something that the state tracks and wants to make sure that you're not over-identifying a student just because they may have a difficulty. They want to make sure they actually have a disability. We are continuing to work with getting more of our special ed students to be able to get general diplomas. That is the goal. So we're working on that and working on making sure that our kids are out in general ed as much as they are able to do so. So that's currently what I have.
Thank you.
Right, thank you, Ms. Bosher. And each board member has their report, and typically, that would be the extent of what we would do in this section unless there's a pertinent question. Dr. Gupta?
Questioning, I wanted to accolade Ms. Bosher, because as a consumer and end user of our services, I think they're the best in Virginia we can have, so we are lucky to have her and her colleagues working in special education.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Thank you, Ms. Bosher. We'll be hearing from you a little later. All right, we will now move to Section E of our School Board Meeting, School Board Committee Reports. And if you have a report, I'll go through them. If not, we will move on to the next person. Item one, Finance Committee, Mr. Harvey.
The Finance Committee will be meeting next week, February 23rd, at 3:30.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. What time? At 3:30, okay, thank you. Item two, Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee Chair, Ms. Bill Evans.
We did meet on February 9th as a committee. We went over a couple of things that we've talked about it as a board, how we communicate through downtown to us. And we came up with the solution of if something needs to go out in the public, Cindy Bab will send that to Director Reeves, which will then go to the chair of the board. If it is not new information, if it's something that's being restated for the public, he can approve that. If there is any new information that will be going out, it will go to all board members before he gives the okay to Director Reeves to send that out. So nothing will come out from the board that everybody has not seen before. The second thing we talked about were the protocols. We did some of those for comments and things if we're, I think I might be getting my two meetings confused, but when we were talking about the public comments, and you already hit on that, Dr. Coleman, making sure that people understood that work sessions were not public comment time and it was during the meetings. The other item discussed was our adoptive school and how that has been difficult during the pandemic. I did send an email out about that to the board members and heard from one person who was already doing things, but at this point, I'm unclear on how the board wants to move forward with that because I did not get feedback on that. So we're kind of up in the air on that part of it. And the last thing we did was talk about advocacy for our budget with city council and how to best go about being an advocate for our budget with them and any chance we have to communicate with them what we're doing, what our need is, that we need to take and do that. It's very important for us to be vocal about that. So we will meet again next month. I would love to hear from everybody on the school piece of it with the email I sent. And as soon as I hear some feedback from that, I think we can come up with a plan.
Thank you so much, Ms. Evans. And I did attend the meeting led by Ms. Evans, and it was a very productive meeting. And thank you for your leadership. And with the other eight of us, please, or seven, please respond to that request immediately. And if you're unclear on the request, you can of course articulate that to Ms. Evans so that she can move along. Thank you for your fine work and for the work of that committee. All right, item three, the Governor's Regional School, Dr. Millis.
So our last meeting was at the end of January, and there was a report given out at our business meeting at the beginning of February, so we don't meet again, I believe, until March, so there's nothing to report.
Thank you, Dr. Millis. Item four, E4, Governor's School Committee, Mr. Harvey.
Yes, the Central Virginia Governing School Board, Governor's School Board met on Wednesday, February 3rd at 1:00 PM. The board covered several items during our meeting. Dr. Smith presented the financial report as well as an update on their CARES Act grant. The board approved a fund balance transfer for spending for technology equipment, for a new physics course that's going to be added to the program. The board reviewed the proposed 2021 through 22 academic calendar, and that was for information only, and that will be voted upon at our March meeting. Dr. Smith reviewed the selection process for the 2021-2022 academic year, and the division advocates are to submit their selections no later than March 19th, 2021. The Central Virginia Governing School will then send letters to all applicants no later than March 30th. I will add at this point, the Governor's School Board asked for clarification on Lynchburg City Schools' intent to add the six additional slots and asked for clarification that it would mean that we would add six additional slots at the junior level, and then the following year, we would add an additional six slots for a total of 12 slots for both the junior and senior level. So I did clarify with them that that was our intent, and the Governing School Board will proceed in planning with such information. Upcoming events that were announced, we have the Central Virginia Regional Science Fair that will be held on March 6th, the Central Virginia Governor's School Foundation scholarships, and the ANC Well Memorial Scholarship are to be mailed out to seniors during the month of February. Point to note that the ANC Well's Memorial Scholarship provides one male and one female, a $15,000 annual scholarship, which is renewable for four years. So that's a $60,000 scholarship that goes to, that potentially goes to members of the Governor's School Board, students at the Governor's School. The board had a closed session for the purpose of discussing personal matters and employee compensation. Our next board meeting will be Wednesday, March 3rd at 1:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. There a question, Dr. Gupta?
No, when we met Dr. Smith, he offered that he'll be more than happy to come and make a presentation to the school board. I don't know if there's an interest in him coming and talking about all the good things going on at the Central Virginia Governor's School.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. You as an individual board member can make such a request, and we'll follow it through, and I'm sure at the appropriate time, it would be delightful to have Dr. Smith.
Make that request.
Thank you. So noted, so noted. Thank you, Mr. Harvey, for your report and the depth of it, Dr. Edwards for working with him to get that critical information to them so that they can properly prepare. Thank you so much. Lastly, item five, Laurel Regional School Board, Dr. Carter.
The Lynchburg Area Unit for Regional Exceptional Learners, which is the acronym for Laurel School Board Meeting, was held February 3rd at 10:00 AM via Zoom. During that time, we received information regarding the budget developing. We're trying to make sure that we're developing a sustainable budget and also incorporating some of the same items that Lynchburg City is with guarding insurance and also with the different salary steps. Also received information that Laurel itself does not receive any CARES money, but depends on the various school divisions for items and for support. Dr. Julie Rogers with Beffert County Schools is now the superintendent in charge of the Laurel Regional Board, and the president or chairperson is Mrs. Georgia Harrison. The other thing is that the Laurel is planning on doing a needs assessment. That's going to be the regional sped directors and also the superintendents of the areas will be looking to seek to do an assessment. And this is a wonderful time now. Anytime that you have so much change and nothing is normal, so it's a good time to look at your system to see how we can better utilize the services provided at Laurel to increase support and continue the excellent educational experience for all students in all the regions. So we're just excited about that. And I think that's all.
Thank you so much, Dr. Carter, for your dedication to the Laurel Regional School Board. If there are no other questions for her or any of the chairs of the various committees or representatives on those committees, we'll now move on in our agenda to Section F. F1, Return to Learn Updates, and Dr. Edwards, if you would, take us from here.
Sure, absolutely. First, I just want to share with you that the CDC did update guidance for schools. Just passing that out. We try to stay on top of that as quick as they change with that updated guidance. It's a two-sided document that you have. It can be found on the CDC website for those viewers who are looking for it. And on the back, it gives the guidance as to how schools use both local community data as well as school data to make decisions about remote, hybrid, and full in-person learning. And, you know, I'm pleased to see that our numbers are coming down. I think we finally hit orange for our positivity rate, so a different color other than red, but we've been in red for quite some time. And we will continue to follow the CDC guidance. They still are saying the gold standard right now is six feet, so we are still following that six feet standard. We await VDH giving some guidance for us specifically. This is just the CDC guidance, and we were told that shortly, VDH will also give us schools some additional guidance with regard to the mitigation strategies. Also, you know that the governor made a request that all schools open up for some form of in-person learning, which we have been offering in-person learning through hybrid learning two days a week for students since September. There are many divisions in the Commonwealth who have been completely remote since March, and for those divisions, they are shifting to having some form of in-person learning, looking much like what we did originally with opening up with just pre-K to two, some at-risk populations, ELL, and special ed. And I think just looking at the guidance that was given, it's a stepwise approach. Each community is different, and again, using those community metrics to figure out what is best for each community. But I do want to remind everybody that we have been open with in-person learning. Our teachers and staff have been here working with kids since September for that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pew to give a little bit more updates on Return to Learn.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening, Ms. Pew.
Absolutely. I want to talk about just some short updates and give you some information. I do want to address that and acknowledge what we've acknowledged before, that yes, we do have students who have dropping grades. That is a reality in Lynchburg City Schools, but please know that it's not just an LCS issue, but it is across the Commonwealth and across our country. We are very concerned about these students, not just the students who are making Ds and Fs, but all of our students whose grades may be dropping for one reason or another. I am pleased to let you know that we have some practicum students from some area universities and colleges, some students from Randolph College, some students from Longwood College that have already been placed and are working with our students that are struggling in virtual tutoring sessions. The Curriculum and Instruction Office is currently working with Liberty University students in a practicum program to place them as well. So we will be able to reach additional students that need support through virtual tutoring. At the school level, we also have some interventions and support that have been taking place. There are many schools in the division, both high schools and elementary schools, secondary schools, that are using what they're calling a power hour, and this is an after-school program where students are coming in for an hour of some intensive support. It may be related to academics, it may be related to social-emotional learning, it may be related to some technology support, or all of the above. We also have some students at all of our schools, some of our schools that are working to bring students in on Mondays to give, during the school day, to give them some extra support. So I do want to let you know that we, in addition to the classroom teachers, the school counselors, the social workers who have been supporting our students all year, we have some additional efforts that have been taking place for the students who are struggling, whether remote only or in hybrid. Also wanted to let you know that we have some important decisions to make coming up that are involving many staff, principals, teachers, counselors, school counselors, as well as central office staff. Just like last year when we had to shift and respond to in March, and then again in the summer when we had to begin our plans for Return to Learn in the fall, we have several groups that are going to be working on some efforts, including summer opportunities. I wanted to give you some things that are in the works. including summer opportunities. I wanted to give you some things that are in the works. These are not definite, but we're looking at an elementary program for students through the Y M C A. We're also looking at some intensive support for elementary students in, in terms of addressing some learning gaps. We're looking at a twenty-first century summer program as well as a sixth grade transition program. We will also look at having a middle school and high, high school S O L remediation opportunity for some students as well as some senior intensive support that will take place obviously before summer because we want our seniors to graduate. And then we also, as we have in the past for high school students, will offer some online courses so students can take those as needed. We also have some groups that are working on what our Return to Learn will look like for the fall, for both in-person and a virtual opportunity. So those are the short updates that I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Pugh. We will open the floor for a brief discussion on this. And I do want to remind everyone that Board Member Susan Morrison is participating virtually. And so Susan, whenever you want to chime in, you can please acknowledge. So I see so many hands at this time and you look so good behind all of these wonderful things. If you will, I'm just going to start with Ms. Evans.
I just had a quick question when you were talking about the opportunities on Monday and the virtual tutors. How, which students are getting that? How is that being determined?
We have lists from schools that, of students that they feel need some intensive support or some additional support beyond what they're able to give them. So we are working, the C and I Department is working in collaboration with the schools to determine who needs the support, particularly from the practicum side. But the schools are determining those students that may need to come in for the power hour after school or for Monday for some additional support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morrison, would you like to share something?
I'm good, Dr. Coleman. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Dr. Carter.
Mrs. Pugh, I'm so happy to hear that you explain and tell us all of the things that the Lynchburg City Schools is trying to do or doing or and are going to do to help our students because oftentimes, like yesterday, I heard the news and I just said, oh, Lord. And I knew we were doing things, but so I'm glad that you are here to tell us that and the fact that we have people at the schools that are already identifying students that need this. Now, so if a parent or guardian feels that their student needs some more remediation or help, what do they do if their child hasn't been targeted or hasn't been identified as one person of need?
Absolutely. As always, we would ask that the parent, if it's in one particular class, start with the classroom teacher. That teacher may have already given the supports that he or she is capable of, of giving at that point. And at that point, they could reach out to the school counselor or to the principal to express their interest in having some additional support for their student.
And also happy to see that the schools are going out into the community too, to help students and to knock on doors. So thank you for that. And we know this is, like you said, this is not just Lynchburg. This is everywhere across the board. And I know every school is trying to do, district is trying to do what they can. We don't want to see anyone fall behind. And I think I heard a dumbing down and we definitely don't want to do that.
No, ma'am.
Definitely not going to do that.
Absolutely. Thank you. I, I do want to mention, I'm glad you brought that out. We do have schools that are going out into their neighborhoods, their communities to reach out. I know Lincoln Horn Middle School had an event with, in, in one of their neighborhoods with, they took staff and they took some goodies and some food and they had some things, some instructional kits and resources to give to students. And not only did their students come out, but there were also just community members who were older and just wanted someone to talk to. We have another event that's being planned, I believe, at Sheffield. And I think we're also working with Darrington Elementary Principal to get another one of those off the ground. So we will continue to, to reach out to the community as, for events like that.
Thank you. Vice Chair Brennan.
Thank you, Ms. Pugh, for your, for your comments. And I thought it was, as far as the CDC recommendations, I thought it was interesting and encouraging that they're saying that if you have a mitigation plan in place like we do and like we've done, that schools can be opened safely. And I think we've shown that through our activity. And I think particularly the amount of work that our staff has done, teachers all the way down through everyone else in the schools to keep them open and keep them safe has been remarkable. And clearly, the issue with, with grades is not a reflection on the work that our staff is doing, both remotely as well as in class to try to help our students. But it also boils down to the fact that probably we're not going to do any better or it's going to be hard to do well until they are back in school. It does look like transmission rates are down. There clearly is a big push both statewide and nationally to get children really back into school, hopefully not just one day a week, but more than that. Do you think there's any, to you and to Dr. Edwards, is there any potential in the future as the rate goes down locally that we could move forward with opening the schools more than we are currently?
I'll take that one. Absolutely. We, we, and one of the reasons why I gave out the CDC guidance, because we were all waiting to see what they would say with regard to the social distancing and the six feet, which is one of the limiting factors in the classroom, but even more on the bus. Even one child per bus is less than three feet for, for much of that, that ride. And we're looking for some guidance that would say you can put two on a, two in a seat beyond just family members or siblings. I think that would be very helpful in, in conjunction with vaccinations and kudos to our internal team who is still working on getting our staff vaccinated. Our, the number of vaccine doses afforded to us has gone down. I should let you all know that we were starting with like a hundred and fifty during that first week. We were real excited that by, you know, the end of March, everyone would be vaccinated at that rate. And of late, we're down to about thirty-nine. I think we had a couple of days ago. We're out at HealthWorks now trying to get some additional doses, but it's a little slower than it was. And I think if we can speed that up, that would also help with any mitigation and getting kids back in. And as we started with our plan, if you go back to September, the first kids that we brought back were our pre-K to two students, our E L L and our at-risk. And we will continue using that model as we expand and, and try to bring more kids back.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our School Board Member Nellis.
Yeah, I want to acknowledge the effort on part of staff. I guess the, the news release that Cindy Beb put out about Did You Know? and the really heroic efforts of one counselor in particular to reach out to a family and it took seventeen tries and finally made the connection, which is, says a lot on both sides. So I do want to acknowledge that. And I know the staff are working really hard to work and connect with the kids. But the reality is, we really need the kids to get back in school. I looked at the CDC guidance. I didn't find it particularly helpful. We're basically already doing what, what, what they, what they suggested. They're, you know, we need to get the kids back in school. That's the only way these issues are going to be resolved favorably. And I know there's long-term plans about what impact COVID might have on education, certainly within the city. And if our experience is any guide, it's pretty clear getting the kids in class, face-to-face instruction is what's, what's effective. There are students that can succeed in the virtual environment. Those are, I think, the exception. So I, I really want to see us try to get the kids back in school. If, if not five days a week, at least four. And, and follow the same model that we had before with getting the younger kids in and the E L L. And I understand the issue about spacing on the buses is really what limits that. I'm not sure what the, how the surrounding areas are, are getting around that, but I think their experience might be helpful for us in terms of getting kids back in school and, and moving in that direction. I really don't want to just sit there have us assume that, well, it's going to be the fall before the kids get back in school. It's, you know, we need to, we need to push the envelope. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. School Board Member Senha.
Well, I agree with everything the others have said. Certainly, we're in a, a very difficult situation that we have to contend with. We know it has adverse effects on everybody involved. How we go about recovering, bringing students whole for having missed a whole year of, you know, the social aspects of, of school. I just, you know, that's really troublesome, especially when we know how hard our teachers and staff are working to try to make as rich a learning experience as, as they possibly can. So I really appreciate the hard work that everybody's doing. And just want to encourage students, if you're struggling, don't, don't suffer alone. Reach out. Call your teacher, call a friend, do whatever you can so you're not so isolated and, and falling behind.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. School Board Member Gupta.
Thank you. I have several questions. I asked one of the questions before. So what is the timeline? We are, I'm hearing phase three right now. So what is the timeline or the plan to move to phase two, four?
The Governor dictates the phases that we're in, so I can't accelerate that timeline for him. I can say that for us, we're looking at our internal mitigation and looking at our L C S COVID numbers, which is what we've always been doing to try to get more kids in. We've been bringing more kids in, in our current environment. It's really looking at that six feet piece. But it, but the phases are not determined by, by me.
What I mean by phase four is you go more than two days in classroom. In phase four, you're basically targeting it almost four to five days in classroom.
Okay. So, okay, I understand what you're saying. So that for us, again, unless this Board is willing to entertain putting two students in each seat, because that's one of the things, to get all of the kids in school at the same time, one of our limiting factors right now, this happens to be the bus and then the spaces in the classroom in terms of increasing, I guess decreasing the social distance between students in our existing classes. And I will say, you know, we don't often talk about what other divisions are doing except, say things like, they do four days a week. But we don't say that, what does it really look like when you look at their schedules for four days a week? And there are things that we can, we can do. There are some commitments that we made, commitments to the arts and commitments to health and P E that they would also get some in-person time. We could do things like saying, nope, all of that's going. We're just going to focus on the core subjects, social studies, language arts, literacy, and everybody's going to do that. And that would be a full day. So I think having the in-depth conversation and not just a numerical conversation of, there are people who are in school four days a week or five days a week. What, what does their day look like? And is their day, are they experiencing things that we value, arts, health, P E and, and those things as well each and every day? Or do they spend time maybe with an assistant for part of that day in an, in an off location? Which is what, when we were doing our Return to Learn Plan, one of the first things we had to decide was whether or not during a school day, would we build in all of the experiences for kids? Or would we just simply say, we're going to be academically focused on the four core areas? And we decided we weren't, we were going to include it all.
I think as we plan for that movement, I know four is a numeric number, five, but thinking out of the box, the weather is going to improve after March or from March onward. So could we occupy the outdoor space and use it for educational purposes? It's still better than having a kid at school or home, you know, and have, provide more social interaction. You just need more seating space outside. And do our schools have that capability and capability to provide that?
You probably just felt all the smiles from principals because we just had a whole conversation about two, two weeks ago about the outdoor space. So that's already in the works in terms of looking at buildings and building those outdoor spaces so we can use that, especially when the weather breaks. Weather hasn't been very nice of late. But still, just getting the kids there. We're trying to strategize on how to best use our available drivers. And one of the things was, you know, check with your neighbors and see how they're doing it. Let me remind you that before COVID hit, we were already experiencing a bus driver shortage. So it's not as though we are on par as the same with all of our neighbors who may not have the same bus driver shortage needs that we have, which makes a difference as well. But to your point, Dr. Gupta, the thinking, the, what we're going to do, the piloting, we are looking at things for the fourth marking period when we anticipate weather being much more cooperative than it has been or will be coming up this, the rest of this week.
Can I, can I interrupt very quickly?
Yes.
We were, I was just told that people on Zoom, if you're not speaking into your microphone, they cannot hear you. So just everybody needs to speak into their microphone.
Thank you. Order of the House, thank you for establishing that, Ms. Evans. Please, let's all speak in our mouths, mics so that the viewers can hear appropriately. Ms. Pugh would like to say something?
That's what I was going to say.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Gupta, you're doing right well. Do you have anything else?
My last comment is I know constraints will always be there, whether it's a bus driver or a sitting space. And achievement gap is the biggest problem for me. It's, it's like a cancer which have long-lasting effects on our generation after generation. So, you know, we, we take care of these challenges and provide our kids the, the education they need sooner than later.
And I think that's what you heard, Ms. Pugh, talking about as we're just reaching out to kids. We're going to them in their neighborhood because the achievement gap is so important to us and our kids are important to us. So, yes, we have the challenge of getting them to us. So we go to them or we bring them in on Mondays or we have private tutoring sessions with them to fill the gaps. You know, we're going to do a lot to make sure that we don't lose our kids. And let me just take this moment to just say kudos to all of the school counselors, particularly those working with the seniors who are just, the road to graduation is real. And they are really working with the, with children and their families to make sure that kids are, are in a good position to graduate high school on time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Our School Board Member Harvey.
Thank you. I, I also want to say thanks to Dr. Edwards, Ms. Pugh, and all of the staff for continuing to develop the plan, work the plan and continue to improve the plan. I know that's very difficult and, and I think we all hope to get to a point where we have learners in our classrooms with direct interaction with our teachers as quickly as we can. But I do appreciate all the hard work that you guys are, are doing to do that safely. One of the questions I'd like to follow up with, with Ms. Pugh on is, is there a, a focused effort to identify students and encourage them to participate in any type of summer program outside of just simply saying, we offer this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I mean, I hear, you know, if, if you're, you know, if you're a parent and you're concerned about your student, you know, please reach out to us, give us a call, et cetera. I just wanted to know if we are making a concerted effort to let parents know that their student might require such a program during the summer and encourage them to take advantage of that?
Absolutely. We're, we're, schools are reaching out now to have those conversations and reaching out to parents to say, please get your child in, whether it's for the, you know, the hour on after school or the, or if it's on a Monday or if it's a virtual tutoring. But we are definitely having plans for reaching out to parents to say, we really need your child to attend this program in the summer or, or the consequences could be such. So yes, we, we, it's not going to be just involuntary. We will definitely identify students that have that need and strongly encourage as best we can to have their parents have them participate.
Okay. And if, and if I could follow up a question, I understand that that would be specifically targeting students that are in, in that D F range. But are we also offering programs for students who might, their grades just might have slipped and they wish to make improvements? Maybe, you know, they slipped from As and Bs to Bs and Cs? Is that, is that an option as well? Okay.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you so much, Mr. Harvey. For a moment, I do want to revert back to, School Board Member Morrison has a question.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. I want to echo the thoughts of my colleagues and my appreciation for all staff and how hard they've worked. We really appreciate their for all staff and how hard they've worked. We really appreciate everything that you do. And I actually have two questions. First of all, do we have any information about how many students actually use buses to get to school?
Yes. I, I don't have the number offhand, but I can certainly tell you, if you'll give me a day or two to get that information, the number of students that are using buses versus being a walker or a car rider.
Thank you. My second question is-
Know that virtual learning will be a part of most of our students' education for a while. And have we made any progress getting Chromebooks to some of our younger students?
Yes. We still have Chromebooks and we also still have MiFi devices for those families that are in need of internet access or a more stable internet access in your home. So if you know a community member, or if you are listening and you need access to a device or to a MiFi hotspot for internet, please reach out to your school, either to the teacher, or to the principal, to a school counselor, and please let them know of that. But we have been issuing additional devices. We are also looking at, for our younger students, at a tablet device for them this spring, a little bit later, in a couple of weeks, actually. So we are trying to increase access to devices as quickly as we can, especially for those younger learners.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, School Board Member Morrison. Thank you, Ms. Pugh. We have two board members that have additional follow-up questions, starting with Dr. Gupta and then Dr. Carter.
So, uh, going forward, I know there's push for testing. Do our school system has any plan with, to have rapid test in-house? Because many of our kids may exhibit symptoms, may not be exposed, may be negative, but may not have affordability to go out there and get tested and be quarantined for 14 days even though they don't have COVID.
At this point, we do not have access to the tests. You're talking about the COVID test?
Yes.
We don't have access to tests.
Because we got significant amount of CARES money, which is coming in, you know, and that's, it's, it's a thought about, you know, because CDC is also pushing for more and more testing. And my fear is just having somebody in quarantine just because they have a running nose. But, you know, the need to, the fear of people, so if they, they get tested, there's no way of avoiding it because of economic reasons.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Carter?
Are you able to share what we are doing to help these seniors, the ones that may have, their grades may have dropped, and whether or not they can do any type of makeup assignments or additional assignments to change those or to have those grades amended?
I don't have specifics for that, but I do know that the CNI department has asked for the secondary schools, specifically seniors. And I know we've received that information from one of our high schools so that we can begin identifying those seniors that are in need of some intensive support and supporting them earlier rather than later. So I do know that we have efforts in the works between CNI and the schools to specifically target those seniors that are, they are concerned about graduation. I can certainly give you more information. I can have Dr. Jordan give me some information about specifics and I can, can send that out.
And Dr. Carter, some of this is so very school-specific and student-specific. And just with, in talking with some of the school counselors and the things that they are doing when they know, I'll call them their student, and they're trying to match their student up with a teacher or an assistant, or, you know, maybe a Beacon of Hope resource that will help those kids. So many of the stories in terms of the work with seniors that, that I learn about, they're very personalized, where I'm having a conversation where either the student is sharing or the teacher is sharing. When I was at Heritage, I saw a teacher who was just doing a one-on-one session with a student for math, just to help a student. So it, it, there are things that are happening in the buildings because of the individuals in the buildings reaching out to students.
Thank you. No other board members on this item F1? I would like to personally just make a brief statement from myself. To be sure COVID-19's impact was first felt in March of 2020 with respect to education in America at all levels. We are focused specifically on Lynchburg, Virginia, and the students we serve. Clearly, we should all agree that expecting optimal results from students with an untried makeshift system at all levels is in fact an unrealistic expectation. Five-day in-person instruction with all of the directives and at times mandates has been nearly impossible for us from day one. Therefore, trying to make people look incompetent in a pandemic is unfair at best. The truth is, all across this nation, we have been seeking to provide public education against the odds, trying to make something work for kids with very little to work with. To date, students have not yet successfully learned how to learn virtually with the proper supports needed. Neither have the teachers mastered how to teach virtually. Ten to 11 months in, we are all still learning. We must now, with the utmost sensitivity to our staff, most of whom have gone way above and beyond the call of duty, engage in robust conversation and corresponding action to create special opportunities for kids to learn the needed course information and where possible, replace COVID grades. I'm appreciative to my colleagues tonight for that being underscored. After school, weekends, summer school, outside, inside, every entity must be ready to help our kids catch up and learn. And it starts with the teachers and staff, but they cannot do it alone. Together, we can get our kids back in school and achieve well across all subgroups. And I hope that our community will rise to the occasion. Thank you so much. At this time, we will now move to item F2, Special Education Advisory Committee. Dr. Edwards?
Absolutely. And one of the board's advisory committee is SEAC, the Special Education Advisory Committee. And we get to hear from them once a year. They share their recommendations and what they have been doing to support our students with disabilities. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Daniels-Boscher.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I have our SEAC president here, Sherry Merrill, and another SEAC member, Tiffany Stevens. Um, I just want to remind the board really quickly of the purpose of SEAC. It's the Special Ed Advisory Committee. It is a legislative mandated, legislatively mandated committee. Um, we are required to meet at least four times a year. We actually meet five. Um, and they just advise, um, the Division on the Needs for Special Education, periodically give recommendations, which is what the team is here to do tonight, and just interpret plans for the community in need and services related to students with disabilities within the division. So I will turn it over to Ms. Merrill. Ms. Merrill first.
Thank you, Janine. Good evening.
Good evening.
The LCS SEAC Committee would like these following recommendations considered. The first one is to implement, the implementation of Virginia IEP system with a focus on the use of the parent portal as a foundation for collaborative IEP development. The second one is the expansion of the Orton-Gilliam multi-sensory reading instructional strategies. The third one is to conduct a review of all IEP-required assistive technology to determine a replacement plan to ensure the use of state-of-the-art updated assistive technology. The fourth one, to continue LCS Disability Awareness Month activities as planned on an annual basis. The fifth one is to incorporate VDOE parent survey into the agenda for LCS IEP and eligibility meetings. Tiffany?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Tiffany Stevens. I'm one of the parent representatives for Lincoln Middle School, serving on this committee. Our sixth recommendation for SEAC is to conduct an annual survey of parents of students with disabilities. We plan to limit questions to initiatives directly related to the LCS strategic plans. For example, we plan to secure parent input on whether they believe in, believe the accommodations listed in the IEP are implemented consistently in all academic environments as attended by the IEP committee. Seven, conduct a review to determine if online speech therapy can be used to meet the needs of students. Would parents like the opportunity to access teletherapy after school from home versus students receiving therapy during the school day? Due to the current health crisis, online speech therapy is now occurring. Speech, language pathologists and occupational therapists are current, are currently able to provide online therapies to students that are not currently in person in the LCS building. Eight, conduct collaborative IEP developmental training for parents and local support services providers. For example, the local Department of Social Services and Horizon Behavioral Health. Nine, collaborate with LCS buildings and grounds to determine if all LCS buildings are ADI-friendly. LCS is currently working with the city on reviewing building needs to determine these needs as we speak. Number 10, expand the number of LCS Special Education Instructional Assistants who have completed the 40 online training specific to registered behavior technicians. And number 11, expand the school's division's focus on sharing the successes of individuals with disability through the student session conducted by LCS school counselors. And lastly, on behalf of the members of the LCS SEAC Committee, Special Education staff and students and parents, we ask that the board consider students with disabilities as they make future budget decisions that impact education in Lynchburg City Schools. Are there any questions?
Board members, any questions? Uh, Dr. Gupta, Dr. Carter?
Dr. We can go first, Tab.
Dr. Carter, you may go first, followed by Dr. Gupta.
I was just looking at number three. Is that, is the review of the IEP's done yearly?
Yes.
Or annually?
Yes.
So is, but during that time, the assistive technology is not reviewed, or is that separate for the latest?
It is reviewed annually. There is new directives that have come down from the Department of Ed, that assistive technology, there's a sheet that now goes into each IEP that is completed and goes into what technology is being used. So there have been some changes that just came down from the Department of Ed. So it's now in every IEP that we will do from this point forward.
So when that comes down, does, is there a review done then? Or is it, or do people, you wait, it's done?
It's done by the IEP team at the time of the meeting.
Can you say that again, please?
I'm sorry. It's done at the, at the IEP meeting, at the time of the meeting itself. It's a part of the IEP now.
But if it comes, so say if it comes in the middle, six months, is another meeting called to look at the?
They can call, they, they can call a meeting at any time to attend that IEP and look at that again.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Dr. Gupta?
No, I like the idea of parent portal, but in interim, is it poss, uh, possible to have like a secured Google Drive where parents, the IEP team, and, you know, can interact? That will avoid all that mailing back and forth of IEP and coming to a consensus. So the document is edited, it's sitting there, and with the eDoc, I can sign it.
We're looking at that. Parent, parent portal is a part of the Virginia IEP system. And while it has its good points, it also has some issues that things don't go back and forth quite as smoothly as we would like. So we are actually looking into that option as to whether we can do it in a secure manner.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
I, um, being a past special ed teacher, I'm the most excited about hearing all the things in collaborating with the families. I think a lot of families struggle to understand the IEP process. It's a lot of legal, um, things that go on. And I'm very happy just to hear how much that y'all want parental involvement and how important it is.
Dr. Nillis? Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Is it fair to say that most of these recommendations really involve continuing efforts that are already ongoing and just a, I'll say, just a matter of, but really just expanding some of the areas?
Yes, it is. In our discussion at the SEAC meeting, when these recommendations came up in October, the SEAC committee wanted to make sure that the board understands that these are still things ongoing, that they want continued to be worked on and, and for the board to remember these.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Uh, uh, Dr., Mr. Harvey, then we're going to come to you, Dr. Carter.
I'll, I'll yield to Dr. Carter. I think she was, she was earlier in the queue anyway.
Well, good. Then thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Carter, go right ahead.
Can you explain number 10 for me, please?
Oh, in order to be what's called a registered behavior technician, that requires a 40-hour online training. And we have a, several staff members, IAs in the division that have gone through that training. It helps with students with behavioral needs and managing certain things that go on with student behavior. And the SEAC committee would just like to see that more of those, more of that training done with more staff as, as it becomes available.
So they will be reclassified?
Yes.
From Special Education Instructional Assistants to Registered Behavioral Technicians?
Uh, yes, they could be. That would be up to the board and the division as to how they choose to do that.
Thank you. Dr. Carter, Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I just have a question. On the final slide, you, you know, you asked for the board's support, especially during, you know, making budget decisions. And I believe that that might be addressed in some of the ongoing items that Dr. Nillis was referring to, that we ensure that that funding stays in place. But to my knowledge, and, and Dr. Edwards, Ms. Laconage might be better able to help me answer this, or help me with an answer to this question. But when I look at our proposed additions for next year's school budget, I only identify two items that are specifically for special education, and they total like $40,000. Are there other items on here that we, that our attention should be brought to, such as any student support, behavioral support? Does any of that fall in the, under the Special Education Department's request? Or is it only those two items that are, I believe, one of them was item number 34, and the other item was a little bit earlier?
Twenty, thirty?
Twenty-three. Yes, yes, thank you.
So I'm going to ask, answer your question by starting with one of the hallmarks to what we're trying to do with students with disabilities is inclusivity as well. So some of the things that you may see in the general budget also cover students with disabilities as they experience the general curriculum. And, and we're working to have them participate more with typical peers and, or, I don't, typical peers is probably not the correct word, but have them experience the general curriculum. With regard to just the items in the proposed budget as addition, we also have additional funding through IDEA for special education as well. So what you're looking at is, is just the operating budget. You may not see any of the other items in an additional area. And Janine has been great at making sure that whatever we need, she always brings to our attention in doing that.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that since you made that specific request, that we identified that as a board to, to make sure we take that under consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Thank you, Dr. Edwards, for sharing. Is there any board members who have not spoken to this item yet, care to speak? Ms. Morrison or anyone present? All right. Any follow-up? All right, Dr. Edwards, any further?
Sure. I just always love to thank my parents for coming out and sharing with us. This is one of the committees that I always look forward to because it, the presentation is completely run by the individuals who have a stake in it. And I, I appreciate that you've come here and shared your recommendations with us. And I look forward to working with you and just making sure that we can continue to implement these things. And if what I see in this, it looks like- And if what I see in this, it looks like these are things that we're doing, but we can always grow and be better at it. Um, and we just wanna grow together, so I appreciate you being here.
Thank you, thank you.
Might the board, uh, give them an applause as well? We appreciate the SEAC and the parents and all over. This is a vital part of what we do, uh, for our, for our students. And so thank you so much, uh, for your presentation. Uh, at this time, we will now move to, uh, item F3, which is our VSBA Master Board Cohort Invitation. Uh, it is before us tonight for discussion, but it could translate into action, uh, tonight or at our March meeting. Uh, the board will need to have discussion and weigh in. And it has been brought to my attention that it would then, uh, be called for a vote. And of course, our regular norms and protocols suggest that the majority of our board, uh, would determine, uh, any particular matter that comes before the board, um, uh, either up or down. So I'm going to ask if we would open this part of the discussion with our superintendent, uh, Dr. Edwards. Uh, and then after she has presented, I would like board leadership, uh, starting with, uh, our vice chair, uh, Dr. Brennan. And I'll make a brief statement, and then we will continue the floor conversation, uh, on this matter as far as we can go with it one way or the other tonight. Dr. Edwards?
Absolutely, so thank you for the opportunity to comment on this. Um, and it's actually very timely for us. Um, if we've learned anything during this pandemic, it's the value of team. Uh, when this happened in March, I don't know what I would have done if the dream team did not rise to the occasion. And at that point, we put teachers and athletic trainers and assistant principals and, you know, almost a, a whole team of people together to work together to make some critical decisions to move the division forward, um, to, to address the pandemic. That has not gone away. Um, as we continue the last 10 months, we've had to shift and morph and reframe our thinking and, and look at things differently. And I can tell you, and as I look out as Ms. Pugh, what we did in April is so very different on what we're doing now, which is gonna be different than what we do in the fall. Um, so that value of being able to, um, collaborate as a team because the task that we have is so important and can be so overwhelming if you try to take it on as just an individual or a small group of individuals. So that brings me to leadership. And Dr. Coleman, you alluded to it, um, in terms of leadership. And I think I've said here before that there are times when I make a decision, I already know that there is no decision that I can make that would please everyone, that everyone would feel is the right decision. Uh, but it is about good leadership and it is about communication and transparency and acknowledging, as Ms. Pugh stands there and says, here's our DF list. You know, acknowledging where we have our struggles and planning for how we're all gonna get better. That expands to all of us up here on this stage as well. So as a board, in addition to my administrative team, I enjoy working with them. I enjoy working with you, and I've also learned over this pandemic, your role is not easy either. Um, you sit here every Tuesday feels like of late to make decisions regarding what's best for kids. Uh, and again, you're faced with it too. Sometimes your decisions are not very well received by everyone. But as I look at what this master board program can do, especially as we go towards the future and what the fall holds for us, we as a group can only get better as we, you know, learn to lead in this transition from pandemic vaccination, you know, the new strains, whatever that holds for us. Um, and I was looking at the courses and looking at particularly the second part that talks about listening and understanding. We've spent a lot of time this year listening and understanding. Uh, not only the public, each other, it's a very emotional time, it's a very challenging time. Um, and the, the more that we're trained to work together, the better we can lead Lynchburg City Schools. And even the last part, after you listen and understand, uh, you have to respond and behave. And, and when I think about that, I think about you, Dr. Gupta, all the time because it's about what are we going to do for our children to make sure that they don't fall victim to a wider achievement gap? We were trying to close it to begin with, and now we have the pandemic. So as a board, what can we do together to respond? And how do we behave so that our children benefit from, um, our leadership? We're gonna have some tough decisions to make. I don't even know what they are yet, all of them. I just know they're coming. Um, and for us to be as armed, we are the first round of learners. We're the big learners up here, and the kids are looking at us wondering, how are we making it through this pandemic? So in talking to my colleagues, I highly recommend that we participate in this program. I think that, um, it will only help us be, we're already awesome leaders. It'll only help us be better leaders as we move forward, um, with what's unknown for Lynchburg City School.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Vice Chair Brennan?
Just briefly, I wanna comment after we had our, uh, meeting with the VSBA team several weeks ago.
I'm having trouble hearing you, sorry.
We decided that, can you hear me, Bill?
It's a little bit better. It's just not very loud. I don't know if you're not close enough.
All right. Um, after we met with the VSBA people last time, we decided that we should contact some of the boards who participated in this program previously. So Dr. Coleman asked me to contact the, uh, chair of the board of the West, Westmoreland Public Schools, who I did. And he was very positive about this program. Um, they, their board, like our board, is very, uh, strong about doing professional development. And in our norms and protocols, we make a, a nod to the code of the state of Virginia that, that addresses that. And, um, they do that also, which states that each board member shall participate in high-quality professional development programs on personal curriculum and current issues in education as part of his service on the board. Um, they felt that this would be helpful to their board. Their board was functioning well, it was not a problem with their board, but they felt it would, it would improve things. So he felt that it really did four things for their board. One, it helped them to build trust within the, each member, that the members trusted each other better when they had this time to sort of, uh, discuss these different issues. Number two, it improved communication between the administration and the board members. Number three, it reinforced board protocols. They didn't actually work on board protocols, but as they had their discussions, they would come back to the protocols and talk about what were good aspects, what were bad aspects. And then number four, and, and he felt really this was the most important point, that it really emphasized the board functioning as what he called a governance team. Meaning that they were working together, particularly working together with the administration, with the superintendent to move the schools forward. So he felt that those four points were very helpful. Um, he felt that their board was very supportive of the process after it was done. They have board members who are working full-time, who took time to do this aspect. I think that's the real challenge to us as far as the time commitment to do this. But I think, um, having discussed it, folks with the, with the, the, the program with the folks at VSBA and talking to Mr. Phelan, I think it would be a benefit to our board to participate in this.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brennan, and I would like to make a brief statement, and then we'll open the floor up, uh, to each of our board members, uh, for discussion. Uh, distinguished members of the Lynchburg City School Board, please allow me to say that I am deeply excited that we've been invited as one of six possible boards to participate in this coveted professional development opportunity to become a 2021 Master Board, recognized by the Virginia School Boards Association. Truly, all 132 school boards in Virginia depend on VSBA for policy, leadership development, and advocacy support. This is a high honor, and I believe our board as a developing team is ready to meet the challenge. This is an opportunity afforded the board at a time when some of the most important decisions ever are being made to impact student outcomes for years to come. Efficiency and effectiveness are born out of effort. Coordinated effort is born out of clear, concise, and coherent communication. Deeper understanding of each other through the development of trust will harmonize this board even the more for the crucial conversations and decisions we have immediately ahead of us. In talking with Douglas Brown, Chair of the seven-member Newport News School Board, who graduated as a Master Board in 2020, he asserts that the Master Board training added value in that process as it helped them last year to communicate better than ever as a board, working with the superintendent and staff to put in place policies that have now helped them deal with the crisis of COVID and prepare for a future of improved student performance. Trust now exists amongst the board members to tackle critical issues that they would not have addressed in the past. Board leadership and governance has improved. To be sure, in the city of Lynchburg, as a result of COVID in particular, white, black, and brown students of every race and ethnicity or any other classification are depending on us being our best now. Our digging in deeper will only foster, or shall I say inspire, the same digging deeper from a staff that has given us all they have and yet more is being required. In other words, of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., this is my Black History Statement. We are now faced with the fact that tomorrow is today. We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now in this unfolding conundrum of life and history. There is such a thing as being too late. This is no time for apathy or complacency. This is a time for vigorous and positive action. We would now open the floor for equal discussion of each board member again. This is discussion tonight. It could turn into action, or it could be resolved at our March meeting. But the VSBA team is awaiting the decision from this board. Uh, we'll open the floor for discussion, questions at this time by any board member. And of course, Ms. Morrison, if you want to share, please acknowledge, and we will do so.
Mr. Harvey?
Um, I'll, I'll ask the same question that I asked when this first was presented. Um, have we, uh, a good understanding of the time commitment that will be asked of the board? And also of the financial commitment to participate in this program? I, for one, have, you know, little, little interest or desire for additional honors and accolades for our board. But if it is training that will help us to better perform, then I would consider that. But as of right now, I still am unaware of what the time commitment and the financial commitment of this board will be for this program.
I would defer to Dr. Edwards or Dr. Brennan. I certainly can answer the question, and, but I don't want to monopolize the discussion. Dr. Edwards, do you wanna answer that?
Sure, the financial commitment, I believe, is $5,500, um, which we have in our account. And, uh, just remember that we, with, uh, VSBA and us not going to, um, Williamsburg Hotel and travel, um, there are some savings there that we could use, um, to support that initiative. As far as the time requirement, um, is concerned, I know that there was some flexibility, because many of you have jobs and work during the day. So there was, um, at least some flexibility to do some of them, perhaps on a Saturday morning, if that worked for, for our folks, um, as well as an evening, um, to accommodate, um, everybody. And it's four sessions of about five hours, I believe, is, is what that would entail.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Mr. Harvey, I wanted to stay right with you with your questions. So the $5,500 is what it will cost the school division, and there'd be no additional expenses. Uh, at this time, the training would be virtual, and so there would be no additional expenses, uh, that would be required in the year 2021.
And what's the, the timeline? I, I mean, it sounds like it's four sessions, five hours apiece, it's 20 hours. Is that within, all within a, a month? Is it over two months, three months?
Over two.
Um, is that gonna happen in the spring, summer?
It's over several months. I don't, I, I couldn't even do that in one month, um, giving up that much time. Um, and I think we have until, uh, the November, uh, spring, uh, fall convention. So it can go from the spring into the summer, um, up into the early fall.
Dr. Brennan would like to add?
I was just gonna add that, Mr. Phelan, so I, I think in general it's supposed to be about every four to six weeks, theoretically, is what VSBA was hoping to have. Uh, we can do it, we, we'd like to accomplish it by November, I think, which is the annual meeting for VSBA. Mr. Phelan suggested that the closer together we do them, the better, because they kind of one feeds into the other. So we should probably be in that range of being like within four to six weeks of each session. And they're four half-day sessions, as Dr. Edwards has said.
Okay, Mr. Harvey, we can come back to you if the addition of questions, Dr. Carter?
For me, this is a no-brainer. Um, we consult the, the Virginia School Board Association all the time regarding any type of complex issues or just to ask their feedback on different things. And also, just the, um, with the way our board is made, our makeup, the nature of the board, it's difficult to get together and to do anything because if you have three people, then that's a public meeting, so you have, it's just so difficult. So this will give us an opportunity to all meet and talk and discuss things. And the other thing is, we are appointed for three years. And when I go to some meetings, I just wonder, well, how do these people learn all that they know? And a lot of times, it's because they've been on the board for years and they have the opportunity to take advantage of these, um, well, these, these benefits that come along. And whereas we don't have that at all times. So this is a great time for some of us to get in on this and to really do this. And I do like the fact that we were at least thought of to be given this favor and to have this opportunity. And this can also grow your board so that you can be known to have the expertise and the professional development to be, make sure that you are good with governance, and that's what we're tasked to do here. So I'm in support of this. And it does, it have a few more days, and we talk about that. But we have been, haven't had the disciplinary committee meetings, and that would used to take up quite a bit of time. So I'm thinking this may even take up some, you know, in place of those disciplinary committees, the meetings that we haven't had. But it's an additional time. And the money, um, a lot of times when we go to retreats, it's very, retreats are pretty much more expensive than this if we had so many of those within a time. So that's, the price is really good.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Carter, Ms. Harvey, for your statements. Dr. Gupta, uh, Dr. Senha?
Can't have two Indian-sounding names sitting next to each other. Um, would we want to consider, uh, not starting this until July 1st in case there is a change on the board? You know, I see us, if, even if we start it next month, we might spill into those months, and it might be kind of awkward for potentially new appointees on the board. Just something to think about.
Dr. Senha, that is a, a powerful statement. Uh, thoughts about that around the board? Each board member's comments are equal. Uh, Mr. Harvey, you'd like to speak to, uh, Dr. Senha's thought?
Yeah, I, I would agree, not only just because of that point, which is a very, very valid point, but folks, we got a lot of work ahead of us through the spring. We gotta get through budgets and, and we gotta, you know, plan our return to learn and, and address, you know, getting our kids back in school, um, more than just two days a week. So I would, I would encourage us, if we wanna tackle something like this, especially if we're looking to consolidate it within a six-week, um, time period, I would suggest that we do it sort of in the summer, um, when we have a little more time available, um, for the board. Because the board has lots of work to do for the rest of the spring.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Anyone else, uh, want to speak to Dr. Senha's issue or another point? Uh, Dr. Nillis?
Yeah, the main concern for me is the schedule. Um, you know, it's a, it's a big commitment and it's a busy spring. Um, certainly, this whole year's been busy for all of us. So, um, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm also, would like to do some investigation on my own. So I appreciate, uh, appreciate the comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Nillis.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, please, Ms. Morrison.
I, I appreciate the comments from Dr. Senha.
I could hear her. I've had a very hard time hearing others as they spoke tonight. So I would, I with Dr. Nillis that I would like to look into this more.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Morrison. Anyone else want to comment tonight? Anyone else want to comment tonight? The chair recognizes at this point that you have been able to hear some of the particulars. There may be some other questions that you may have. And this item could very well, will be put on our agenda for the March meeting for action. But before we move on, is there anyone else that would like to make any statement? I don't want to leave anybody out who didn't have a chance. And please feel free to do any investigation that you would like. That is meritable and we applaud that. Dr. Gupta, did you have your hand up?
I'm trying not to say, but I'll say. With the VSB training, I hope they come out of this mom-and-pop-type business model. Because if you go for communication training, team building, mediation, it's the same group of people teaching it. Even our school system, you have a special ed teacher, you have a math teacher, you have a physics teacher. So I hope they bring in specialized people who have expertise in that area to train us. So the training should not be for just the name's sake. You get a little medal or a certificate and feel good about it. You truly learn from the best. I know these people have practical experience, but there's, I've not seen the diversity in the, in their faculty. So that's one thing I'd like to see in VSB and their training programs, through bringing in a diverse group of trainers.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Mr. Harvey, did you have something in addition?
Yeah, I would just like to request that the leadership put together a schedule and sort of, you know, outline this thing so that we might be able to, if we're going to be required to vote on it in March, that we can actually have a better understanding of what we're going to be committing to.
That's fair enough, Mr. Harvey. Thank you so much. All right, Ms. Evans, did you want to speak? I just don't want anybody that not have had a chance to wanted to say something.
I don't. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. All right. Thank you so much, board. And this matter will come before you at our March meeting for action and we will provide the information that we've heard around the table from each board member. Thank you for the conversation. This will now move us to item, section F4, item 4, the FY 2021-22 Operating Budget Discussion. We're moving along nicely. Does any board member need to take a break before we move into this? I see some head nod. So let's take a five-minute break and then we'll come right back with Dr. Edwards. That'll be our remaining item for our work session tonight. Five-minute break.
Items number 32, 33, 37, and 38. Let's draw on page 3. So 32 and 33 are the addition of a pre-K teacher to pilot the Integrated Three-Year-Old Early Childhood Program. 32, 33, sorry, is the assistant that would also be a part of that program for an integrated three-year-old program, which is different than our VPI. 37 and 38 is adding an additional VPI class, which is our four-year-old program. And of course, 38 is the assistant that would also work with that teacher in that four-year-old program.
Is it time to?
All right. Very good. Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Dr. Gupta, you would like to speak to?
Yeah, Dr. Edwards, as I said last time, in the new positions, right now, we have committed about $800,000. And I know right now you've got $12 million of CARES funding for three more years. So you take $4 million a year and the money is there. But once you take this position, that becomes a fixed cost. The money has to be there going forward. And knowing we are getting flat funding from the city or even below flat funding, it doesn't, looks like to me a sustainable model. I like to vote for every, each one of these positions. They're all important. Don't take me wrong. But the fiscal reality is either you can focus on pay raises for our teachers and staff or you can use that money to hire more people because the money is limited. So how are we planning to distribute that? And as I look at these positions, as I said that last time, it's just we are adding one after the other new positions on the, on the docket.
So with regard to sustainability, one of the things you said is we ask, we're asking for level funding for this, this school year. And we've asked for level funding last year and had a different funding happen. And all I can do is ask. So I'm going to build the budget based on what, what I believe we need. And I think that our schools, our city, our community is, I'm going to ask them to support what our needs are. And yes, salary increases is a need. We've been working on that since I've been down here for the last three years. I think that started with reinvest LCS as one of the things in putting in the pay schedules. So that's going to continue and it is by no means a done deal because we're not where we should be. So that's a long-range plan to continue to improve the overall salary guidance, but also looking at individual positions. We want to go out and do a market study and see how we compare going forward. If, and I say this all the time, I am in no position to control revenue, neither from state nor from city council, federal government, or any of our other revenue sources. And again, board leadership, if our goal is every year to just build a budget based on whatever flat funding we think we're going to get, plus the increase, what is about $800,000 that we may get from the state, then please tell me that. Because that's very different than building a budget based on our needs. I am totally understanding what you're saying, Dr. Gupta, with the fear that it's not sustainable. And I have said that in every single budget year, that that is my worry, that it's not sustainable. But I will say that what we face is the same thing that every school division faces as they're planning their budget year. We're all in the same boat where we have to go and ask either the board of supervisors or in our case, the city council to support these needs. What I'm asking the board to do is to support these needs so that we can ask city council to support these needs. And it also comes with a strategy. We are constantly looking, and I think one of the things you asked is about current positions, and looking at any current positions that we can retool, redesign, repurpose to do some of this work. We constantly do that. We also try to manage as best as we can any breakage from folks who may retire and folks who are incoming if there's a salary differential. So some of that gets picked up in the, in the, the regular budget, but not all of it.
But right now, you're asking for all this new money, right?
I'm asking for what I need, yes.
Yeah, but these are need, in terms of new need, not... Yeah, but these are need, in terms of new need, not continuing need.
Correct, and some of these new needs were on last year's new need list. So I don't want anyone in the public to think I just came up with a new list of new needs. Many of these items were the same things that we have been asking for, if not a couple of years, definitely last year, we had a lot of it.
Because, can I continue?
Uh, Dr. Gupta, let's get, Mr. Harvey, you want to say?
Yeah, I, I just want to make a comment here, and I appreciate what, what Dr. Gupta's saying. But I'll, I'll remind this Board, the last time that we met, we included a line item of what would equate to be about $63,000 to provide health insurance for board members, and that's just the premium. If we then apply for any types of claims, since we're self-funded, that again is an additional cost that our school system undergoes. So I, as I appreciate what you're saying, I would also say, I think we can better appropriate monies that we have in our budget for some of these other line items that I think are much more critical for our school system. And, and so I would, I would be more inclined for us to, to continue through this document, listing the things that we believe are critical for our school system. And then let's go back and reevaluate some of the things that we think should be taken off the table and funds re-appropriated for more appropriate sources.
Dr. Gupta, you'd like to respond to that?
Let's have a deal, let's take that insurance out and take out all these new money positions for $800,000. To me, it doesn't make sense to consume or commit money which you don't have in the bank account. And number two, if I have one-time money, use it for paying bonuses to teachers, pay another $1,000, it costs a million dollars, you've got $12 million in the bucket as CARES money over a period of three years. So I don't see discussions about how to bring the current faculty and use their money to pay for what they have done or suffered for last one year, for adding more personnel. And personnel is an unlimited thing, but we don't have that money in the bank account. It's a wish list.
Now, keep in mind that these sessions are designed to help give the superintendent some direction as the final pieces of this to come to us, to go to council. So please keep that in mind as we are having our discussion. So that I can be clear, we, we just reconvened, so my mind is completely focused now. Dr. Edwards, what are you asking of us in what you just stated? Because I want to make sure the discussion is on point, if we don't frustrate you or the staff and accomplish what we need to accomplish tonight.
Absolutely, so as we look at early childhood and our, our, really this is all early childhood, three and four-year-olds, I've been asked to figure out what we need. We just had a very lengthy conversation about learning loss, and we know that many of our younger students are experiencing that. Prior to COVID, we've had even a citywide initiative at looking at early childhood education and the importance of getting kids in school early so that we don't have some of the achievement gap concerns that, that we've seen. And we want to continue to do that. Part of the 32 and 33, the three-year-old program, is currently students with disabilities who are three-year-olds are eligible for our program. This would open it up a little bit more to other students who are also three-year-olds to get a jump on education early, as well as expanding our, our pre-K program, which is part in our schools and part in the community as well. And that focus on early childhood education, it ties back to one of our strategic plan goals, which was focusing on early childhood education. And it ties nicely with the city's initiative and their focus on early childhood education in poverty. So what I'm asking the Board is if they would support the teacher and assistant for 32 and 33, which is the three-year-old program, and the teacher and assistant for 37 and 38, which is the four-year-old program.
All right, what are the thoughts of the Board, Ms. Evans?
Can I just ask a question in general about this? This is where I'm struggling with what we're doing. Everything on this list to me is important, and clearly there's a need for it or it wouldn't be on here. And every year, you should have a new need sheet based on what you need for the upcoming year. So I expect to see these positions in different areas that need to be filled according to what's going on in the schools. What I struggle with is saying, yes, let's add all of these when you're talking about having to sustain it with the budget without being able to see, you know, possibly where their positions still open that we could close, that we've used, we don't need those, or what we budgeted for something last year money-wise that we didn't use, can any of that go to this? So I struggle with, I think every one of these is a need, absolutely, that they're asking for. But the part of the budget that I struggle with is not seeing the other piece, is there anywhere that it could come from instead of adding on extras to an existing budget already, if that makes sense?
So pre-COVID, some of what we have done in the past is exactly what you said. We retooled and repurposed positions before, and they didn't show up. You wouldn't see them because we would just retool and repurpose them within the division. In terms of some of the, what you said in the existing budget, this is an unusual year. So if you remember when we were in the spring going into the fall and not knowing the exact start date of in-person learning, the one thing that we didn't do is for every instructional assistant who left the division, we did not immediately fill that position. We held it because we knew when kindergarten opened up, we're going to need our kindergarten assistants. So you would see some funds that might look like, look here, we got some money where we didn't fill the instructional assistant positions. Or perhaps because we didn't need all of the custodians when someone retired or resigned, we didn't refill that. So those positions, while you may see, and we're, and, and we are committed to giving you that data, let me just say that too. While you may see, well, what about those savings, what about those savings, what about those savings, we have to be careful that the savings was due to the fact that schools are, were closed. And schools, if, if I'm hearing everybody correctly, we're trying to get schools open for the fall. So those kindergarten assistants will hit the ground running in the fall. That savings that we may have seen in the current year, which if we didn't use would probably roll over in the fund balance, would not be there next year to do what you're asking us to do.
And, and I totally understand that. I think I, for me, it would be helpful though to see, just to see that and to know which, which is which, when I'm also looking at this. I feel like I'm kind of missing a piece of, of prioritizing these because they're all important, and they're all a big need that you need. So I can't imagine saying no to any of them.
To Ms. Evans' point, Dr. Edwards, or School Board member Harvey, Chair of the Finance Committee, or Mrs. Connaught, can we provide, Ms. Evans, with that information in a timely manner, and of course, to each board member, each board member?
We're, we're currently working on that, we've already been talking about that.
Thank you so much, sir. All right, Dr. Gupta?
So all these new positions, are they baked into your current state and city revenue projections? What you're projecting the revenue will be from city and state, including lottery and sale tax funding, all these costs associated with new proposed positions, are they baked into that projection? Or they're over on top of that projection?
They would be on top.
They'll be on top. So my question is, where do you see the money coming to fund these positions? For the Finance Committee, or the CFO, or the Superintendent?
I, I don't know if you want to acknowledge Mr. Harvey, he had his hand up.
I'm, I'm going to let you answer the question first, and then we'll, we'll go to Mr. Harvey. And I do want to put a record, Ms. Morrison has a question regarding pre-K.
Okay, absolutely. So our first round, and this is why I emphasize, we are in discussion. I first need to bring all of the priorities that, that we've determined through, you know, the work with the central office and the schools to the Board and at least see, are these things that the Board feels, and thank you, Mrs. Evans, for saying, I feel like these are all priority things. And then we have the work, and you guys remember, we did this work last year too, of saying, all right, this, some things on here you, you've decided that's a no, which is, which is okay. But for the things that we said a yes, we are going to have to have the hard work that says if there's no additional funding, which we still don't know what the exact funding is, and we're, and we don't know the impact of the salary increase, so that may shift some things. Then we say, yep, these are the things that we thought were worthwhile to include in the budget. That also helps me with a historical record to say, whatever gets cut this year comes back as top priority next year, which is what we did with last year's budget. We still have that work to do, Dr. Gupta, so that we move forward in, in terms of prioritizing what we have with what we anticipate we're going to get from both the city and the state.
Okay, Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate to the Board, I mean, the purpose of what we're doing is building a budget. This is not necessarily finalizing our spending. Dr. Edwards is asking us to go through a list with her to, to, to agree that we believe that these items are a priority. For instance, I agree with, with Ms. Evans, almost every single one of these items, I think, is a priority. There are some items that I've already been vocal about that I do not think are a priority. That's the information that Dr. Edwards and Ms. Connaught and the rest of the team are looking for from us, to help them to build this budget. Once we develop this final budget number, at that point, that's when we have to look at, okay, where are the revenues coming from? Are they coming from the state, are they going to come from local funding? And if we have to go to council and ask for that local funding, at that point, they make the decision whether we get the funding or not. If they make the decision that we don't get the funding, then we come back, sharpen our pencils once again, and then at that point, we might have to cull some of, some of these pieces. But right now, our job is to help Dr., guide Dr. Edwards into things that we as a Board would support in her building of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, Dr. Gupta, if you'd like to respond?
I've got two issues with that process. Number one issue as a personal, to me as a board member, if I pick one over the other, all the staff members who work diligently and very hard have equal appreciation for the work and the need they have. So it's unfair for me to have a stepchild treatment. In my mind, the finance is not important, but the HR is important, that's number one. Number two, deciding the cost before the revenue is like inverted. I decide how much money I'm going to spend next year, then I go find a job to meet my expenses. That doesn't make sense. You decide your spending based on how much money you're bringing home. That's what everybody does, right? You decide how much you're going to spend next year, and then you look for salary to make up for the costs you're going to spend at home. I don't think nobody does that. So it doesn't make sense for us to figure out all the costs, then we'll go look for the revenue, where to find that money to make up or cover those costs.
Dr. Edwards, you may respond.
And I appreciate the conundrum because I've thought about that too, and the way this system is set up. And just listening to you and, and the way that you have identified it, it would make more sense for city council and state to say, here's your money, don't build your budget, here's your definitive money, this is what we're going to give you, we're sure, we're not backing down, now go build your budget, which is what I hear you saying. I need to know exactly how much I'm going to get from everybody before I start this process. The challenge is, I start this process in December, before I even know what the state's going to give me, I have to identify my priorities before we even know what the council's going to give me. And you heard me even talk about the challenges with the, the raise right now with not even knowing. So if it's the will of the Board that, don't bring this stuff to us until you have the exact numbers, I think we would be waiting until May, and then we would start those priorities. Because I would be in the same boat telling staff, well, I know you've given me a list of priorities, but I'm, I'm waiting until I have the actual funds.
If, if we could give that a little break, I do want to give Susan Morrison an opportunity to raise her pre-quake, pre-K question, Ms. Morrison?
Dr. Coleman, I feel that everything we can do to get early education to more students is really important. We know that the impact when children do not get that early intervention, we know it's significant. But I do want to know, if we create these two new classes with the teachers and the pre-K teachers and the instructional assistants, how many students are we serving?
So generally, in a non-COVID year, we have about, what, 16 to 18 kids in a classroom? That's without the social distancing and COVID impact.
Susan?
I just wanted to remember, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Morrison.
All right, this is probably our third or fourth time we've been going through this process, and I was of the opinion that the Board was clear and had meted out our philosophical perspectives to how we go about doing this, and that the way we're going about it is to figure out what our needs are, have the best information we can to determine what those will be. Additional information that Ms. Evans will get will help her, as well as many board members to make those decisions. And I would trust that we would not deviate from that unless it is the will of the Board to do so. And so I think before us at this time is 32, 33, 37, and 38. And, Dr. Neillis, I see you want to say?
Yeah, regards to the early childhood, I'm going to be the heretic here. I'm not really a strong supporter of this, mostly it's because the reality is, it helps the kids when they're in, you know, the pre-K, but there's little benefit by the time those kids, students get to third grade. There, there really isn't the, the follow-through there. Unless these kids are, are targeted for their particular situation in being in a really high-poverty situation, that's not clear to me from the information I'm, I'm seeing here and what's been discussed. So I know that's not, not a nice thing to say in this, in this company, but I'm just looking from a pragmatic point of view that, I mean, you look at the results from kids coming out of Head Start, and you know, any advantage they have from, from that, it really disappears by, by third grade, so. I want to make sure what we're doing is going to be effective, so unless there's some targeted follow-through here that, that builds on that.
And, and Dr. Neillis, are you expressing your lack of support for 32 and 33, or 32?
32 and 33, I think they, they're, they go together.
All right, is there any support for 32 and 33 not? I'm so pleased.
Ms. Pew?
Ms. Pew, thank you so much, please go right ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to Dr. Neillis' concerns. Currently, there is a, a group working on, looking at a pilot of this pre-K three-year-old program. And the objective is to provide preventative vertically-aligned services and innovative services for early childhood students, starting with three-year-olds, going through kindergarten. So that this will build with our three-year-olds, moving on to four-year-olds, and then into kindergarten, and then eventually, if we need to, looking up to third grade. So we're really there looking at establishing a comprehensive early childhood environment that is going to provide wraparound services for these students, for academic support, social support, behavioral needs. They're focusing on prevention for supporting children with high social, emotional developmental needs, providing educational and community resources to children who need additional services. And so the, the anticipation of this is that it would start with this three-year-old program, these three-year-olds, and then continue those services in that wraparound into 4K, and then in following them into kindergarten, so that there isn't the disjointed or disconnected issue that we have currently. I think there is some thought that our 4K students, they're in 4K, and then they go on to kindergarten, and the supports that they had in 4K are no longer there. So the proposal for this pilot is to start small with one class of three-year-olds, to follow them into 4K, and then into kindergarten and beyond, to provide those comprehensive wraparound services.
Thank you, would you like to respond, Dr. Neillis?
Well, I'm not trying to have a respond, but I mean, it does, that does raise the, the question, or begs the question, it sounds like this is going to require additional resources in subsequent years. I'm not sure what the evidence for the particular program that's being followed is. And it, and it's also, it's not just education. And it's also, it's not just education. You know, there's a lot of social services, and that's the reality of where we are in public education. It'd be good to get some outside funding for certainly the wraparound services. So my, again, I'm not a real strong supporter of this.
All right, thank you, Dr. Nillis. Is there, I'm trying to see from the board, Dr. Brennan?
I just have to say that I am a strong supporter of the pre-K education. I think that this is very important for our community. I think there has been data to show that it is beneficial. As Dr. Edwards pointed out, it's been initiative of the city to try to make this work, and I think this is very important for us to support. So I'm in support of this proposal.
All right, Mr. Harvey?
I would agree. I also am in support of this. I work with another organization outside of the school system with early childhood development, and I see the benefits to our community through that program. I think that some of the concerns that Dr. Nillis shares, you know, have some validity, but I think that's more in us following up through later grades. And I know one of the programs that the YMCA puts on kind of tries to help with that, you know, that sort of summer learning loss. So I think it's admirable that LCS is trying to work on developing this program and start it out and be consistent and follow through with tracking these students and see how they fare in the coming years. So I'm going to be in support of this measure as well.
Dr. Gupta?
I'm assuming you're looking at majority vote, right? Or you're looking for, what are we trying to gather here?
What we have been customarily doing. If you're asking about the vote from the board, customarily, we will continue to do what we've been doing. And at this point, I'm just using generalized language, I'm not speaking to individuals, but we've heard one statement in the negative, we've heard a couple of in the affirmative. And so we would have to do a roll call when a motion is made either against or for, and we would vote it up or down.
Because...
Please.
Thank you for, Mr. Harvey, for waking me up. I think I'd like to change my vote on last week's compensation and insurance to move to the other side to no, because I need to be consistent in terms of adding new monies. So I'm against adding... Is it too loud?
You got to pull your mic closer to your mouth.
Is it, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, thank you for pointing that out. So I'd like to change my vote from last time for compensation and insurance to no. If majority, that's why I was asking the process of what it is. But I'm not in support of adding any new positions till we have a funding source identified. So that's my blanket.
But procedurally, for tonight, Dr. Gupta, we're not going to be, you can have an opportunity to speak to what you just said when we come back around with the budget items for prioritization, et cetera. But for tonight, it would be appropriate that we could entertain a motion, either for or against 32 and 33, and then we'll do 37 and 38.
Are you looking at me? I'm just saying, I totally support 32 and 33 and see the importance. I agree.
You wanted to put that in the form of a motion?
Do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
Is that how we've been doing this?
We've been doing this along the way. And then what all it does is it's showing that there's support of the board, it's still a process, it will have to come back. But that's kind of how we've been doing it.
So I make a motion to accept number 32 and 33 on the budget proposal?
Second.
Early childhood education.
Second by Dr. Carter. There are no unreadiness or questions. We're going to do a roll call, which is what we are responsible for doing when we have electronic participation.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I guess my concern with this is, like I say, I'm not going to support this, but I think the implied additional funding requirements in subsequent years, I think, also gives me pause for supporting this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Your points are well taken. All right, there is opportunity for the board to give some direction at this point in the process, and we're going to call the roll. If you vote yes, you're in support of 32 and 33 as presented, if you vote no, you are not. Clerk?
School Board Member Evans?
Yes.
School Board Member Morrison?
Yes.
School Board Member Evans, excuse me, I'm sorry, Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Nillis?
No.
School Board Member Senha?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta?
No.
School Board Member Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
I want to hear the vote first.
There is seven in support of number 32 and 33 and two no's.
So as of right now, and before we recognize Dr. Gupta beautifully, don't lose sight of what Mr. Harvey said earlier. We're going through a process, and all of this will come back around. All right, Dr. Gupta?
In this process, I don't want people to feel that we don't support them. So it sounds like, you know, they are not my favorite child, or they're not my favorite friend, and that's the problem I have with this process. That's for the staff to bring the priorities, what their one, two, three, four, five priorities are. My no is just because I don't see the funding, long-term funding, to sustain these positions. I just see a position being asked and a dream being created, but there is no fuel to fulfill the dream for long term. Maybe for a couple of years, when the care funding is there. When the care's funding is gone, how will we sustain these positions?
This is a need-based budget, and we've articulated those concerns. So thank you very much, Dr. Gupta, for that. Now, items 37 and 38 are for us in our work session for consideration for a yes or a no, as it is presented to us. What is the pleasure of the board on those two items at this time?
A move that we add a pre-K teacher to pilot the integrated four-year-old childhood pre-K program.
That's item 37?
Yes.
Would you like to include 38, or we're going to deal with those?
Yes, include 38.
All right. Okay, there's some motion. Dr. Senha, were you going to second that?
No, I wanted to ask a question.
Feel free to, I just, thank you. Seconded by Dr. Brennan, and is on the floor, Dr. Senha has a question.
Since this is part of a Commonwealth initiative, what's the likelihood that there will be special monies coming from the state for this in a way that would make it sustainable or wouldn't, you know, put the burden on the city?
That is a very good question, because as we talk through, money does get shifted to different priorities at a state level. So at this point, I don't know. I know that our VPI program is funded, partly funded. So there has been a lot of support for it at the state level, and early childhood is one of the things that they do support. That would be great if we do get additional funding for it, but I don't know, Ms. LaConne, have you heard anything specific?
I have not.
Could you make a change?
Just to clarify, so are we already doing VPI-related activities? Okay. When did this program start?
It's been here since I've been here. I know that.
Okay, so it's a long time thing, okay. For some reason, I was thinking it was a fairly recent initiative, but, thank you.
There is a motion on the floor. Is any other questions or discussion around it? All right, hearing none. And again, we have to do roll call with electronic participation. So once again, roll call, Ms. Evans?
Yeah, me, yes.
Oh, excuse me, I was asking the clerk to call the roll.
School Board Member Evans?
Yes.
School Board Member Morrison?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Nillis?
For the same reasons as the last 32 and 33, and the lack of any really long-term funding planning for this, I'm going to vote no.
School Board Member Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta?
I will vote no for the same reasons, no long-term plan to fund these positions.
School Board Member Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
All right, Dr. Edwards, we can now move on to your next consideration.
Okey-dokey. All right, next up on the agenda is item number 23, which is on page two, and it is support for the two school psychologists to assist with testing evaluation case managing. And I don't know if, I can't see if Janine is still here, if she... No, ma'am. She is not, okay, okay. So this is the special education position, and I would be remiss if I said that school psychologists are hard to find. We've had them on our agenda, we've had instances where we've hired someone, they've left, we've had to contract out. Contracting out is very expensive. We prefer to hire permanent individuals. But it is definitely a need.
All right, Dr. Senha?
Question on this, so approximately, you know, how many students would they be serving? And is this in response to just increased demand or number of students with these needs? Or because we haven't filled these in the past, and we've been paying, you know, contracting or whatever?
I'm going to let Ms. Pugh address that. Yes, I think it's both. We currently have five school psychologists and one intern this year. And we currently have four of the psychologists who serve three schools, and then one of the other, the other psychologist serves four schools. Hutcherson is currently served by contracted staff, but they're not an endorsed school psychologist. So these two additional positions would eliminate the need for contracting out psychology services, as well as taking some of the load off of the cases, the caseload that the current school psychologists have. As you can see, they're serving many schools, and sometimes they are going back and forth and have meetings at various schools for eligibility and those types of things. So these two would offset the need to contract and would also allow less schools for each psychologist.
Dr. Gupta?
How much savings do you project to have after taking out those contract services in dollars?
I don't know the answer to that. Ms. LaConne, do you know how much we're paying for the contracted services at Hutcherson? I don't know that.
We'll bring it to finance.
That's a very important question. Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Senha, again?
And these are dedicated to serving only the special education population?
For the most part.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
I was going to say, right now in the pandemic, it's all hands on deck for anybody.
I can believe it.
All right, Dr. Carter?
I'll be in support of this because I know a lot of times, parents struggle with making sure that their children are given the appropriate services, and a lot of times, that may be delayed or slowed down due to the lack of testing. And so if we have more psychologists that can do the testing, testing that they can identify early students in need, that will greatly impact disciplinary issues and get students to have the help and supports they need. So, yes, this is one that we may, we'll see the benefit in other areas, and will cut costs in other areas.
All right, Dr. Brennan?
Dr. Edwards, can I just ask for clarification, or Ms. Pugh, as far as the services that we have that are outside contracting, what roles do they do? Are they psychiatrists also? And how does this differ from the services that we contract with? I know we used to contract with Horizon, and now we do with someone else, but how does that service differ from what these individuals would do?
They are substituting for what the individuals would do. So it is a psychologist outside contracting service to do the testing, because we don't have anybody to do it.
So I'm sorry, I guess, put it another way, the contract that we have, or we, you know, I'm sorry, I don't remember the company now, but it used to be Horizon, did they provide psychologists as part of that package, and this would be helping to replace that?
I don't think so. I think these are school psychologists that are working on eligibility testing and providing services there. What we have for contracted services, that you're speaking of, would have been different services. Those would have been day services for students. But these are school psychologists that are specific to, I believe, special education, and also, they would be able to, with these additional two, we would be able to have them be part of the school consultation teams, which, because right now, they just don't have the time to do that with their caseloads, they would be allowed to start addressing concerns raised by VDOE and that are noted in the J-LARX study about school divisions that are referring to many students for special education without looking at interventions and other options first. So these additional school psychologists would allow psychologists to sit on school consultation teams, to look at other interventions before students go into referral for special education.
Great. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Pugh. Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Ms. Evans?
I would just say, too, I support this as well. Even being in a private school, you've got to remember that Lynchburg serves kids in those, too. So those psychologists are also coming to the private school to test kids. To have three schools as a psychologist is a lot on your plate. Testing is long, and without a doubt, we need more. It's a big job, and I think the more help they get, the better for everybody.
Are there additional comments or questions, Dr. Senha?
Yeah, that was a point of clarification I was going to ask about. Are these services that we are obligated to provide to any school-age student, I guess, or age-eligible student, regardless of, well, if they're in a private school or homeschooling situation?
If they've been identified, yes, we offer them. Well, even if they're not identified, to get identified, if they make it through that process, our psychologists would have to go and test them. So, yes, even before they're even in the system, to get there, the psychologists would have to go do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Carter?
And a lot of times, I think that's what we see with some disciplinary problems, that students, I've heard parents say, well, I've wanted them be tested, but there's such a, sometimes they're not able to get to be tested readily because of the limited number of employees that we have in that capacity. So this will really help, I think, with the identification of additional services and/or the, if they need special education services.
Thank you so much. I do want to remind the board that we have some other items for tonight, and of course, we've got the month of March, maybe needing to add an extra meeting, depending on the length of our discussion on each of these items. So is there anyone now that is prepared? Dr. Brennan?
Just reflecting back on our conversation previously about the budget process, I'm kind of assuming, and I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, that this sort of is a wish list that we're going through of things that we would like to have, and I'll do word, and at some point, we're then going to prioritize which of the ones are higher on the list in administration, I think will help us with that. I have a little problem with this as far as the price tag for it goes. It's a pretty big price tag for something that we are going to have a lot of things on our list. So I have a little reservation about is that, is how high that will be on the list of priorities for the administration when we look at the entire budget and what funds we really have.
Dr. Edwards, if we can share with us later, with it being two school psychs for the special ed, and we see the total, are we dividing that by two, or is one more than the other?
No, that's the price for, that's the cost for salary benefits for two. School psychs are not, they're not cheap.
Absolutely not. They're not cheap, and the need is real.
Yes.
All right, Dr. Nillis?
Yeah, I guess, based on everything I'm hearing, it's, I believe there's a need there, but I would rather us plan for one, to add one, and I think that may be reasonable and doable, and go from there.
Are you wanting us to consider one position rather than two?
That is my opinion, so depending on what, how the motion, what the motion is.
Yes, sir. Your opinion is valuable. Someone want to put that in a motion, or? Yes, sir. Your opinion is valuable. Someone want to put that in a motion or chairs willing to entertain whatever we would like to vote on?
I'll make a motion to, uh, for, um, which one are we on here?
Twenty-three.
For item twenty-three to, uh, add one, um, school psychologist to the division for half of the amount.
So that would be divided by two, the two seventeen, six eighty, which would be the total for one. Is there a second to Dr. Nillis' motion?
Based on my comments before about the cost, I'd like to second that.
Seconded by Dr. Brennan. We are now going to ask if there's any further discussion on twenty-three now reading, uh, school psychologists add one to assist with testing evaluation and case management of students. Ms. Lukanich, do we have a number for that, what that would be at with one?
One hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars.
One hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Any discussion on, uh, this motion has been seconded. Uh, Dr. Gupta?
And I felt like a broken record, but I will vote no on same reasons. We're adding a six-figure position with not knowing how we will sustain those positions going forward. Where will the funding come from? I have not heard that answer to my question. I have asked several times tonight and I have not heard anything. So it's a dream. Right now we are setting up.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Any other discussion? Mr. Harvey?
I, I would like to hear from the administration, uh, is this acceptable to cut from two positions down to one? Or is it critical that we, we have two positions? Because if, if you tell me it's critical we have two positions, then I'm gonna vote this, this motion down and make the motion that we stick to what's presented.
Uh, I think what was presented as two positions is what the need is. I certainly understand the challenges we're gonna have with funding and having to make priorities as well. So, but we put forth two, and I think Ms. Pugh explained to you the why behind it. Um, and nothing we do in this budget is, can be done in isolation without looking at the total package.
Right. And so, so I would encourage my fellow board members to vote this motion down. If you're in support of the, um, two positions, because if, if it is in fact voted down, I will make the motion that we approve it as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Any other discussion from the board? Dr. Carter?
I'm just, I'm thinking of the students that are constantly struggling and frustrated because they haven't been, been identified or they are struggling in a class or they're struggling just to make it through because they don't have the services of an additional, of the psychologist. And, and if you look, um, to find a psychologist, very difficult and testing is even longer. Sometimes you wait six to eight months to be tested. And we have students that need services and they need other resources or services that they aren't getting because we're looking at, um, one, it's like building a auditorium and you need seats for two, two thousand. You're gonna put in a seat for seven hundred and fifty, knowing that you're gonna mask, max it out before you even build a building. So I'll be voting no on this, to vote for the number that's requested.
Okay, I'm noticing, uh, from virtual participation and around the room, it doesn't appear that there's any further discussion. We'll now ask our clerk to do a, a roll call. If you are voting, uh, yes, you are voting for, uh, twenty-three to be modified to one school's, uh, psychologist at one hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. If you are voting no, it means you do not support the motion by Dr. Nillis, seconded by Dr. Brennan. And then we will, the floor will be back open for an additional motion. All right, um, Ms. Day?
School Board Member Evans?
No.
School Board Member Morrison?
No.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
No.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
No.
School Board Member, Dr. Nillis?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Senha?
No.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
My no is not for one or two. My vote is no.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey?
No.
Again, the motion is, um, no, seven, and two was in agreement.
All right, so the floor is now open once again for item twenty-three. The consideration before us is for two school psychologists, but something else can be presented or that. Um, School Board Member Harvey?
I would like to make the motion to, that we approve the addition of item number twenty-three, special education to the development of our proposed budget.
Second.
For the total amount of two thou-, uh, two hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. The maker of the motion, seconded by Dr. Carter. Is there any discussion or questions on this? Dr. Nillis?
Yeah, I'm not gonna support this for the reason I don't think this is realistic for us to hire two school psychologists.
Thank you, Dr. Nillis. Any further discussion, questions? Then we'll ask our clerk to, uh, call the roll.
School Board Member Evans?
Yes.
School Board Member, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
In support of the will of the board, I'll vote yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nillis?
No.
School Board Member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
No.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you, board. Dr. Edwards, the next item.
Okay, we are now moving into the information tech area. And, um, in that we have item twenty-one and thirty. Uh, twenty-one being the network engineer, uh, and then thirty being the data analyst. Network engineering position, um, we had. And, uh, when we moved the director position, we did not, um, refill it. We kind of tried to collapse it and see if that would work. Uh, but with the increase of technology and providing devices, um, for our three through fifth graders and, um, I don't know if you heard Ms. Pugh talk about providing tablets, um, for our pre-K to second grade, second graders, um, is where we're moving. We are increasing our load, our traffic, our service, um, for that, as well as also trying to provide assistance for families using these devices as well. So, um, just looking at that network engineering, uh, position and the security, uh, pieces of that as being, uh, number twenty-one.
All right, uh, thank you, Dr. Edwards, and, uh, please pardon me. We're very clear on what we're doing, but just from our little mind, uh, this item one oh four, information tech, when, when will we ever discuss that?
What item one oh four?
It might not be one oh four, but it's under possible care's funding.
Oh, the, the ITRTs, that, we'll get to that.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, please, I don't want to be a disruption.
No, no, no.
This is, this is, information tech is critical for where we're going in the twenty-first century. Our ability to increase our ADM, our ability to give real solid data and be able to make good quality decisions. And so, uh, the board, uh, uh, what are your thoughts, uh, twenty-one and thirty is before us at this time? You've heard the rationale.
So we're voting, uh, the, the, both of these are up for discussion.
Yes, 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 sir.
You know, I guess some a little bit of a quandary then, I mean, the, the network engineering, I believe, is, is clearly needed with the increase in devices and internet traffic and all, uh, associated overhead with that. Uh, the information tech, data analysts, um, I, uh, I guess I'd need some more understanding of what's involved there and, um...
What, and I, and I, and I also, but if I, if I could, uh, Ms. Pugh, you go ahead and speak in the, I would like to say, go ahead, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to address the data analyst position. As it states here, it's really to support in the collection, analysis, discussion, review. We are data rich, um, and many times information poor. We are really lacking the personnel and the processes to produce meaningful information reports, um, that will allow us to make data-driven decisions in terms of academics, social, emotional, behavior, and some other services that we provide. So we're looking for a person that will work across departments, not just in information technology, but would also work with student services, would also work with curriculum and instruction, would also work with special education, and some of other departments, um, in, in specifically equity and community engagement, to provide us some, um, meaningful, uh, data reports, not just at the division level, but also at the school level, um, and help us develop a meaningful data dashboard, data warehouse, so that we, um, teachers from central office down to principals to teachers have data at, at their fingertips to make some informed decisions, um, around student progress. Where we often talk about the achievement gap and access to accurate data and it is, is going to help teachers make informed decisions. So this position is what we would be suggesting there.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Pugh. Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I would, I would like to make the motion that we approve item number thirty for an information, uh, under information technology for data analysis, uh, for ninety-seven thousand, four hundred. And also for item number twenty-one, information tech, network engineer for one hundred and four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. I believe both of these, as, as a board, we understand how critical these are, especially as, as Ms. Pugh explained, the data analysis, um, position. I think we as a board, we request data all the time to make decisions. And I know that each one of us at one point or another has been frustrated with the lack of being able to get certain pieces of data that we, that we need to wrap our heads around a particular subject. So this position would not only be critical and helpful to the administration, to our schools, but I think it would also be, uh, helpful for us as board members as we seek to better understand our roles and responsibilities in making decisions. So I will be voting in, uh, favor of both of these positions.
Thank you. The maker of the motion will need a second. A seconded by Dr. Carter. Uh, I certainly will be supporting this, um, trying to take advantage of all of the professional development we've had across the time. And I'm mindful of Ivory Tolson's great work in which he helped us over at University of Lynchburg to appreciate the value of good data. So I'm certainly supporting this. Is there any other discussion or questions regarding this? Dr. Carter?
Regarding number twenty-one, um, need for robust network security, we, um, often in co-, um, in conferences, we've seen school systems that didn't really take that seriously. And the amount of money they pay, this will be just a drop in the bucket to retain or to regain that, um, trust and also the data. And we always talk about data. We are a rich, we are rich with data. But trying to get it, to have someone that can analyze it, to, that can present it to us and be consistent across the school system will be awesome. I will be supporting.
Dr. Gupta?
So we are committing two hundred thousand dollars of fixed costs, not knowing how we're going to cover that cost. And also knowing the IT business model has changed over the years. It's, it used to be a ninety billion-dollar industry, now it's more than seven hundred billion-dollar industry. So nobody does it in-house, network manager's done from outside. So it, it, as I said, again, long-term sustainability, I see it's important, not important. It's basically more perceived opinions I'm looking at, I'm hearing. I'm hearing more perceived opinions. I'm not hearing any solid evidence behind those opinions. They are just emotional, um, blurbs or opinions, but nothing data to support. So I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Harvey?
I would like to address that question. I would, I would challenge us to go to any outsourced and say, please, um, digest, analyze, and present the data that we as a school board for Lynchburg City Schools need regarding, uh, our students. I, I don't think you're gonna have that ability unless you have someone who understands, uh, Lynchburg City School Systems and, and how we operate. Um, I, I just, I think that this is a critical position.
Dr. Nillis?
Yeah, because these two positions are tied together in the motion, I'm not gonna support it. Um, in regards to the data analyst position, uh, if the teachers don't understand the, the students' needs, I think the principals might need to engage a little more with, uh, with their staff.
Thank you. Dr. Nillis, Dr. Senha?
Uh, well, I would have to take issue with that because I, I saw examples, um, talking with, uh, teachers that I know through the system of innovative ways they're using data to, um, uh, data-driven choices of students to funnel into advanced classes at an early time. And, um, it eliminates implicit bias and things like that. Also, you know, um, there's a lot you can do with data that just knowing your students intimately is not gonna help you with, but you could do some sort of predictive modeling and other sorts of things, um, to do early warning, uh, look at patterns and, um, discipline referrals. I mean, there are all kinds of things you can do on a larger scale with the data that any one teacher's not going to be able to do, um, with that. So just wanna make that point.
Thank you, Dr. Senha, and, uh, I would like to acknowledge that, uh, again, having read Ivory Tolson's work, that the Bozian interrogation of data is huge. And to have somebody that can help us in that process and give us the proper interpretation of it and not be exploited in means by which that is happening and the dollars directed towards that, it's a wise expenditure of, of resources in my personal opinion. Dr. Gupta?
And I don't want to challenge anybody's credentials, but data is information. And information right now, in the current twenty-twenty-one, comes out of a fire hose. So you don't manage it manually, you manage it by software to do predictive modeling or anything else. So, uh, as I said, it, managing in-house, long-term will cost a fixed cost and we don't know how to cover it.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there any further unreadiness? Then, um, uh, uh, the maker of the motion did present twenty-one and thirty together. So if you're not in support of both, you should express that in your vote. If you are, you would vote yes, if no. Yes, Dr. Senha?
Can I just inquire why they are tied together?
The maker, the, the maker, the, the superintendent, you want to say?
I, I didn't, they don't, for me, they didn't have to be tied together. They could have been twenty-one and thirty separate.
This isn't like, you know, when you have a, a, a teacher and an assistant for a program. I can see those going together. And I'll, I'll tell you, I work for an institution that outsourced a lot of their data management and it has saved a lot of money, but it's created a lot of headaches. So I'm of a mind that that should be an in-house capability on the network engineer.
The maker of the motion, which is seconded, which is on the floor, unless the maker of the motion would say differently, uh, we would have to vote on that motion with them being presented twenty-one and thirty at this time. Hearing nothing from the maker of the motion or the second, uh, School Board Clerk, would you please call the roll?
School Board Member Evans?
Yes.
School Board Member Morrison?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Nillis?
No.
School Board Member, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School Board Member, Dr. Gupta?
No.
School Board Member, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries seventy-two.
Thank you so much, Dr. Edwards.
Okay, all right, uh, number, next one is number thirty-five. And then we only have one more after that to manage the time. I'm looking at the time as well. Uh, number thirty-five is the communications specialist, which is sort of a, a morph to help, uh, that, the existing department, the TV media, but more public engagement officer with some social media experience. Um, and we talked a little bit about that briefly the first time. Um, solicit pu-, uh, proactively soliciting public input, uh, hosting listening sessions, um, and monitoring and responding to social media, which is something that we, um, don't have as much, uh, personnel dedicated to actually monitoring, um, it. When they're posted on our site, we can certainly do that. But, but the other end of it is a little more challenging. The other piece of that is providing some support. You've seen lots of engaging, um, video productions from our communications department. Much of that is being done by one person, um, who is, who is moving around, doing fantastic jobs. So also if we could provide a little depth and support in that area, that would help.
All right, thank you, Dr. Edwards. And again, we're dealing with some tough... All right. Thank you, Dr. Edwards. And again, we're dealing with some tough stuff that maybe in the past, we didn't have it, maybe we did or whatever. But this is something before us, which is an evaluation of where we are and how we can get better. And you can get absolutely sidetracked and ruined as a school division without being able to manage these things appropriately and the support we have. So we'd like to open the floor for discussion on this. And if any board member wants to know anything about how the communications department is being run at the present time, who are those players? You know, and how this works alongside of that, I'm sure Dr. Edwards would answer those questions. Ms. Evans?
As I said at the beginning, I think all of these are important. For me, this one probably goes a little bit lower on my list, just because it's not directly student benefit. I think that's where I'm trying to put my priorities, is what's going to benefit the students the most. So while it is important, it's of a lower priority to me right now in this process.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Dr. Brennan?
I agree with, I agree with Ms. Evans. And also, as I mentioned, when we discussed this previously, I think that the communications department is doing a great job. I think they're now interacting with, with the community relations group. I'd love to see that sort of get reorganized and come back to the board to discuss what their future plan will be, how the different roles will be done. And we address this at a later time, but I'm willing to do whatever the board would like to do.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Mr. Harvey?
I, I would agree with what the other two board members said. The only part I struggle about this is this one individual that we're talking about is doing such an incredible job. And I would hate for him to hear us sort of downplay basically his support, because he has been doing such an incredible job. I'm, I'm involved in another organization outside of the school board that is, ties in with their schools, and he is assisting us in some programs, and he is just top-notch. And so I would not want him to hear our, our lack of support for this position being detrimental to what he's doing.
Okay. I'm reading a lot into what you're saying, Mr. Harvey. And, and, and I'm just wondering, Dr. Edwards, and I see Director Reeves is up there. Maybe we could get a better understanding of the flow of communications and why this is critical. And Dr. Gupta, we certainly want to recognize you. You want to make your comment now?
I just wanted to say, that's what I've been saying all along. Picking one over the other makes the one you don't pick as a stepchild. And that is not good process. And on top of that, you're picking without knowing how you're going to support those positions.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Edwards, would you?
Yeah. Director Reeves, are you there to speak on behalf of this?
I am. I'm here.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
What I would share is the Equity and Community Relations Team has the goal to communicate information accurately and efficiently, both internally and externally to all of our stakeholders. We definitely want to share good news stories. We want the, to shine the light on the great things, the positive things that are occurring in LCS. We definitely want to encourage families to remain in LCS and to increase the interest of those who are not in LCS. In order to do this, though, we must be more proactive, and we have to be prepared so that we are less reactive. I am grateful to this board who understands the importance of equity, family engagement, and communications. All of these things are housed in this one department and require collaboration and meeting with all of the other departments. This team is a five-member team that consists of the director, who's the visionary leader in all of the aforementioned areas. Implementing the Virginia Department of Education Ed Equity Plan and providing guidance and support for the division is essential to the changing needs in our division. We've talked about the achievement gap, we've talked about family engagement, partnerships, community engagement. All of these efforts are being handled out of this department. When we talk about communications, we, yes, yes, we have a coordinator of communications who is responsible for writing all of our communications, both internal and external, addressing the media requests, providing assistance to the schools and crafting messages, and among other things. The coordinator works with the webmaster, and of course, that position also is the graphic designer, to make sure all of our messaging is clear so that the webmaster can put it on the website and out on our social media. The webmaster also works with the schools to keep the school pages updated, as well as our social media pages. Many of you see and have mentioned tonight the work that our video media specialist does. And that position requires someone to complete special projects that, that are aired in the community, YouTube, Comcast Channel Seventeen. What's missing is that one person to handle the marketing side of things, the person who can help us be more proactive. As Dr. Edwards has mentioned, be in front of the social media so that we can continue to do great work. We need the manpower to continue to collaborate with other departments so that we can provide the marketing for open houses, listening sessions, and other communication efforts that will allow us to reach our students and families. When we talk about family engagement, it has to be done, it has to be done correctly, and the communications department is, is critical in, in making that happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Reeves. Of course, I cannot make a motion, but I, you know, this is, this is interesting to our ears. And I do know, as a member of the Executive Committee of Virginia High School League, that Dr. Billy Hahn brought this to that board because he was getting crucified relating to social media and being able to help student athletes, kids, and all of that, and just advocated for a position for this. And now I'm hearing the same thing with our school division. All of it ties together. And the more effective we can be in communications, this board continues to advocate for the best communication possible. And that is huge to how we get our story out, how we manage ongoing developments that are against us. I'm supportive of this position if it comes before this body as a motion tonight. I'm sorry, Dr. Carter?
Prior to attending one of the conference breakout sessions, I would have also put this as not a, well, I may put it as a high need. But it's very important that we really tell our story. And this position, what I see is going to be proactive. And that's what they talk about, to look at all of your, when people are calling in. They really take a look at the number, when people are calling in for different things. And they are proactive, and they start to be there and to find ways to communicate with our stakeholders, parents, guardians, and other people that we collaborate, collaborate with, to make sure that the need is addressed correctly and consistently. This is a person that will be handling the crisis, whatever. If there's a crisis, they will be the one that will speak on, for our Lynchburg City Schools, the communication, our brand, and again, marketing. And even talked about the different companies. One that had an incident and no one ever said anything. And that went south. And versus another one that did say something and responded in a timely manner. And that's what we're talking about, responding to things in a timely manner and consistently, and how that went so well for that company. But this is something that's needed now, it's needed for public engagement. It's needed for, a lot of times I wonder, well, so where, where did this happen? Or how did this happen at a school? We didn't hear anything. Well, we should be able to hear everything. What's going in the school systems in every school, it should be out, it should be posted. And these are people that put our marketing on steroids, that really ramp up our, our public, public image, and also takes the full lead to really get us to where we need to be in this world of the internet and all of those services.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Continued discussion? Anyone want to make a motion for or against this item number thirty-five? Mr. Harvey?
I will make a motion that we support item number forty-five for communications and add ninety-seven thousand four hundred dollars to our proposed budget.
Been a motion to support third, item thirty-five. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Dr. Carter. Is there any further discussion or questions on this matter before us tonight? Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I, I mean, I want to clarify my position here, because I hear exactly what other member board, other fellow board members say. You know, when we think about communications in this position, we think about interacting with Facebook, we think about what's on the web, we think about, we think about those things. And I think it's much easier for us to associate some of the other items on here that directly impact a, a person meeting our learners where they are. But, but as we've heard from Director Reeves and some other folks, I think this is a, a critical position. You know, many of us remember, I might more so than others, simply because I was new to the board and when all of the Facebook issues hit with, with what was going on at EC Glass, you know, and, and maybe if we would have had a communications person to be able to help get out in front of that, that could have, that could have been helpful to, to LCS to kind of ease the storm. So I will be in support of this. And, and I completely understand that it's not as, it's not as easy to be a hundred percent behind because it doesn't directly impact our, our learners. But it is a critical position, so I'll be in support of this.
Further comments? Hearing none, either from Ms. Morrison participating electronically. Board clerk, would you call the roll?
School board member Evans?
Yes.
School board member Morrison?
I need to know what we're voting on.
Ms. Morrison, we are voting on item number thirty-five, which is the TV media public engagement officer with social media expertise for ninety-seven thousand four hundred dollars at the present time. We're voting yes or no for that position to continue in our ongoing discussion.
Yes.
School board member Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Nellis?
No.
School board member Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Gupta?
No.
School board member Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries seventy-two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Dr. Edwards.
Okay. And the last one above the CARES funding line that we're going to discuss tonight is item number thirty-nine, which is one of those, when we talk about items to help retain staff, this came up as a question. We have a compensation benefit for teaching staff as they earn additional degrees, a master's degree, educational specialist, or a doctorate degree. And you see the individual values there for each of those degrees. But for some of our administrators, supervisors, APs, principals, directors, the same attainment does not come with that, whereas in other divisions, it does. So one of the things when we were looking at ways to retain staff and asking them, you know, what are some of the things, what are some of those perks that would make LCS special? This is one of those perks that was discussed. And if we were to do a straw at everybody who may be eligible for it, although this might weed itself out, on a high end, if everybody received this in addition to, and I'm not talking the regular masters to have the job of, let's say, a principal, you're looking at a high of seventy-two thousand dollars would be the high of all of it.
All right. I want to start with Ms. Evans.
I just had a question. You said for teachers, we already do this, correct?
Yes.
That's just what I want to make sure.
All right, thank you. Dr. Brennan and Dr. Carter?
Dr. Edwards, can you just clarify the administrative, the deputy administrator? Because I, I kind of think of administration in downtown building, but I know this has come up at the schools when I've been visiting them, saying this is, these are, these are assistant principals, these are people who are in the schools who are trying to further their education, and really don't like to get any credit for doing it. And that's where the group we're looking at is compared to someone who's not at the base schools. This is...
It, yes, it includes the principals, and it, it came up in more discussion at the school level than at, at the central office level. That was the source of origination. But you, you take, you've got a couple principals who, at least since I've been here, who've earned their doctorate degree. And they've asked, you know, if, why, or, you know, what, why does, why doesn't LCS support that same benefit for administrators? So, but it would not preclude anyone who, at a director level, who would go above and beyond whatever their required degree is.
Thank you. Dr. Carter?
And Dr. Edwards, you stated beyond the required degree. I'm surprised that this hasn't been already, how has this not been equitable across, from teachers to principals or the directors or administrators? I don't understand why that wasn't equally compensated for a degree beyond what. But yes, I'm in support of this.
Dr. Gupta?
I have two questions. Is this amount parallel to what the teachers are getting for a similar degree, or is it higher or lower?
It's exactly the same as what the teachers currently have.
Because I'll support this because I see this as an investment, not as a cost to the system.
All right. If we could, Dr. Nellis and then Dr. Senha?
Can you talk to how this compares with what neighboring divisions offer?
I don't have their exact numbers, but I can get them and...
But I mean, is there a similar raise, I guess, for administrators that have it?
Some do.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Nellis, Dr. Senha.
Did I, Dr. Edwards, did I hear you give an estimated total of what this would, what you think this would cost?
Yes, without my data analysis person, I kind of went through and just thumbnailled how many folks might have this as an option, without kind of looking at what their requirement is. So I went with a high number of about seventy-two thousand dollars.
I see this also as an important retention strategy to, you know, keep talent here that we want. We've gone through a period of a lot of turnover of principals and such. And sometimes turnover can be good, but more often than not, it's very disruptive. So I see this as a, a step towards fulfilling that goal of retaining talent.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Any other persons with any statements? Is there one who would like to get a motion on the floor for us to say yes or no to?
I'll make a motion.
All right, please, Ms. Evans?
To accept number thirty-nine, the compensation for administrators who obtained a beyond-required degree.
All right. Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Brennan. All right. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none?
I have, I have, I have a comment, and I just like to say I do support this. I'm in line with Dr. Gupta, and I said this is important for our personnel and helps with retaining and with career advancement and aspirations, so.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. All right, Madam Clerk?
School board member Evans?
Yes.
School board member Morrison?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Nellis?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Senha?
Yes.
School board member Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School board member Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any closing comments tonight from you, Dr. Edwards, relative to the budget considerations?
Absolutely. Just a big, huge thank you, because I know this is a difficult task for us to do. And I just want to reiterate one more time for the public that these are just kind of aligning our priorities and that we're going to come back and we have to have an official vote. So while the board is showing support for these items, we still have to come back and have an official vote. And to Dr. Gupta's point, the way that this document is divided, and it's color-coded, but yours might not be color-coded, but there is a whole list of items that start with the one-hundred number that are below the black line that say possible CARES funding. And the reason why they are not included in the operating budget is because there is really concern as to those positions and the sustainability of that, because they are significant. Although the CARES funding is significant, those positions are also significant and require a different... is significant, those positions are also significant and require a different type of conversation than what's above the line. So, thank you.
Wow, and some deep stuff in these. Well, thank you, Dr. Edwards. At this time, we will now move into Section G of our work session, which is informational items. And our next finance committee meeting, as Mr. Harvey stated earlier, is February the twenty-third at three-thirty. And I'm presuming that'll be a Zoom meeting?
No, I believe that will be, well, I would say in-person in the board meeting, but board room, but I'm not sure where we will be able to meet.
Right now, we're still in-person, to my knowledge.
Yeah, we'd still be in-person, but can we meet in the administrative building? Yeah, that's the only question.
Okay.
We'll find us out.
I'll let you all work that, those details out, and the full board will get that information. The next school board meeting will be held on Tuesday, March the second, two thousand twenty-one, at five p.m. We'll have the consent agenda, and then items from this meeting that need to be acted upon will be advanced, as well as continued discussion on our budget. The next school board work session will be Tuesday, March the sixteenth, at five p.m. And those are the informational items that we have before us at this time. All right, Section H, item one, superintendent comments?
So, I'm going to be brief and just do my Black History moment while we're here. And I wanted to take a moment and just celebrate where we're sitting in Dunbar Middle School, Dunbar High School. I had the opportunity to, and I'm going to say partay, with some of the alumni who graduated from Dunbar High School, and I do believe like it was the sixties and the seventies, and it was in this very auditorium, that I learned so much about the history and the culture, and just from the individuals who were here celebrating what it was like to be a member of Dunbar High School. So, you know, I believe in giving credit and hold, and homage to our elders, and I do respect everyone who on the Dunbar High School Association for their work and their contribution, and their just commitment to education, because they are some fantastic individuals, and the legacy goes on. So, I'm very happy to be here in this historic building. And I thought it would be interesting just to share what was happening ninety-four years ago during this time in Dunbar. So, I managed to get a copy of the Dunbarian, which is their newspaper from February twenty-first, nineteen twenty-seven. And you can see some of the things in their headlines being, of course, the basketball team defeats Stanton, but they were also observing at that time National Negro History Week in nineteen twenty-seven with guest speakers. And it speaks a lot, if you do read through this. What you will see in the history of Dunbar is richness, rigor. You'll see the commitment to education, you'll see them celebrating their teachers much of what we see right now in present-day Dunbar. So, I just wanted to share that little blast from the past, also give honor to everyone who is alumni of Dunbar High School, and the contributions that they continue to make to this school and to our school system and our community. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Edwards. Wow, this is powerful, and I look forward to continuing to read it. This will now move us to Section I, board comments, and we'll start with Ms. Evans.
I'll just say quickly, I have an eleventh grader at E.C. Glass who's doing virtual, well, he's hybrid. He's been virtual because he was on the basketball team and they had to quarantine, and we had kept him out a little bit before that. But he seems, he seemed to have gone off the skids last three or four weeks at school. And I just want to point out the lengths that his teachers have gone to attempt to get him back on track. And it's more than I should expect them to do, and it's more than they should have to do, but they're doing it. And I just want to acknowledge that. It's, you know, they're going above and beyond, I think, what we probably even think they're doing on a daily basis. They are doing more than we even think they are doing on a daily basis. I see it every day. And I just wanted to say again to the basketball coach from E.C. Glass, I find it phenomenal that they were able to play seven games this season, that they were able to do that with the athletes, and I just wanted to say thank you to both.
Wow. Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Morrison?
I too want to echo what Ms. Evans said, and I also want to give a shout out to the staff and teachers and administrators who are supporting the return to the arts. It's really great to see what they're doing in their schools for our students, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morrison. Dr. Carter?
And just to also add to something that Dr. Edwards was saying, the Dunbarians, that association, I, I said that I would love to have done, to do interviews with some of the students that came out of Dunbar High School. They're now in their seventies, and some maybe a little older, some a little younger, and they are so committed. They love this program. I try to tease away and pick at to see. I said, now, not everything could be, could have been that good, but they repeatedly tell me, I have cousins and other relatives that have come here, that it was amazing, the unity, the support from one another. And it is really difficult to get anyone to say something negative of those, the ones there. And a lot of their names are on the statue or the plaque outside, and they are really, that was, I don't know what they did, but it was a united front. They really, and you talk about marketing, if we, they really marketed themselves, and they were known in the, in their communities and the community of Lynchburg as a whole. And they have also come back and give back. And I have a cousin that lives now in Georgia, and he constantly calls and he'll ask me, you know, did I see this person in the deaf notices? That was his good friends. So, they really keep in touch, and they still come back, they didn't last year, but to come back and to support the school. So, this is great, but it would be great to just see what it was that really made them mesh because they did. And the other thing is, I just want to, I've been talking to several teachers and staff and employees at Lynchburg City Schools, and they really do want the best for our students. And that's just so evident in the way they are talking about, they're just doing whatever they can, trying to do the best with the remote learning, the hybrid, just trying to find activities, and they're working together with other teachers and doing more cooperative type collaboration, cooperative collaboration, to, just to make sure that they're reaching every student. And I just want to say, we need to give them an applause for just what they're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Dr. Brennan?
Just very briefly, I just wanted to thank all the staff for all the hard work that they do every day in our difficult environment, and particularly those staff at R.S. Payne, who, when the power went out this week, had to go beyond to help the daycare students. And I want to thank also the principals and the staff, and Tina Day for coordinating this lovely thing for us, this recognition for the board. It's such an honor to be on this board, it's such an honor to work with everyone who's a member of this board, and such an honor to work with the staff. So, thank you very much for looking to you.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Dr. Nellis?
No comments.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis. Dr. Senha?
One thing I want to mention, you know, Dr. Edwards, you said about the academic rigor of Dunbar. One thing people, or that history seems to overlook, or maybe people like me overlook, is when schools were integrated, we integrated the students, but we didn't integrate the teachers. And, you know, because of job discrimination, some highly educated African-American teachers taught in the African-American schools. And so, the clear oversight racism that led to not integrating teachers into the schools was a real loss of rich tradition, high-quality faculty, and so I just want to make that point. And I too want to thank all the students who made cards and put together art and fruit baskets and what have you. It seems every year, this pile of appreciation gets bigger and bigger, so I'm extremely grateful for that.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. Dr. Gupta?
Yeah, I wanted to thank for all the nice gifts today from every school in our district. Really appreciate it. For Dr. Brennan, you may notice, for long haulers, for COVID effect, one of the side effects is to say no, no, no all the time. You may have seen me doing that in the board meeting today. But I wanted to thank Ms. Latonya Brown. She gets unnoticed. She's been running our vaccine station at Candler Mountain, and this lady has a person in and out in one minute and thirty seconds. That's what Virginia needs to copy. They need to come to Lynchburg City School District and see what Ms. Brown is doing, and how can we copy in every district in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So, thank you, Ms. Brown, for doing an excellent job and making us stand out in the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Mr. Harvey?
I also want to thank the schools. When I arrived this evening, it looked like Christmas morning. I've never seen so many beautiful packages, and I was really excited, and I do appreciate the acknowledgement. And I think we all agree that it's nice to be acknowledged. I personally like to know that there are folks that what we do here directly impacts them, and they're showing their appreciation. And that, to me, says a lot. I want to close on one comment, you know, because I've heard this throughout our discussions here this evening about, about our budget and about funding and how we, and how we are going to support this funding. What we're doing is we're crafting a budget. We're building a budget. We're determining what we believe our school system needs in the way of funding to operate to the full potential that we all desire it to have. It will be up to us as school board members to advocate for this budget, whether it's, at a certain point, we'll determine what comes from state funding, what will come from, you know, monies that we might have. That will come. But there might also come a time that we have to advocate for what we need, that we have to go before city council and advocate for what we need. It will, it will be ultimately up to city council to decide what they will or will not give us. If they choose not to give us what we feel we need to operate the way we need to operate, then our job will be to come back, sharpen our pencils once again. But we should be advocates for Lynchburg City Schools. We need to be advocates for our teachers, we need to be advocates for our learners. It is, I'm proud that we supported the step increases. I am proud that we supported all of the elements that helped to acknowledge the accomplishments of our staff with furthering their degrees and so forth, and the focus on retaining good staff. I appreciate all that. But I also appreciate that we need to support our learners. We need to be able to reach them where they need to be reached. It will be our job, and it might be a tough job, but it will be our job to advocate for this school board's budget. This is not Dr. Edwards' budget, this is not Ms. Laconic's budget, this is the school board's budget. We will be the ones presenting this budget to city council this year, next year, the following year, and years after that. We will be the ones who are responsible to make sure that it is sustainable. So, it's going to be up to us, and I encourage us all to be prepared to advocate for that, because I strongly support every item that we voted to include on our budget, and I do plan to advocate for that. But this is a building process to develop a budget that we believe needs to support LCS.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. I would encourage the board, please, to make sure that you turn in the information that School Board Member Evans requested earlier. I also want to make sure that in clarity of messaging, that we all make sure that messages are sent out correctly. And I do want to make sure that the public is on point with the fact that in item seven of our projected needs and considerations, that does not speak to twenty-five thousand dollars per board member. That is to be divided by nine and some other things that are in it. And I also want to remind the public that this board, as it dealt with the contract of the superintendent, there was no ten-thousand-dollar increase in that. And so, I want to make sure that all things are put out correctly as it relates to this school division. Thank you for all of these great things, as Dr. Brennan stated earlier, that we've received tonight. Thank you for the comment concerning Director Brown. And at this point, according to parliamentary procedure, there's no objection. This meeting will stand adjourned.